He graduated from Ozark Christian College in 2011 and from Cincinnati Christian University in 2014. David joined the staff of Town and Country as Associate Minister in 2016. Now, all that is true, but I wanted to say furthermore, I have the privilege of watching David grow up. I think he was probably about five or six when his family moved here to town. A fantastic family, but what I remember most about David, he had this incredible gift of being able to read and remember the Bible. And for about four years, he won every single Bible Bowl competition he was in. Matter of fact, and David, correct me if I'm wrong, but when he went to graduate, he got so many scholarships that when he went to go to college, he had more money than he needed. And I don't know if he got cash or what, but okay. But a fantastic gentleman and David is taking over. You might remember a few weeks ago, Dale Greer, the current Senior Minister of Town and Country, performed our invocation for us. And David is going to be taking over as Senior Minister here in January. So look forward to great things from Mr. Heffron. So David, take it away.
All right, let's break. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this new month and for this holiday season. I want to lift up these leaders to you during this conversation. In this time, we pray for wisdom and discernment as they discuss some of the issues facing our city. We also want to lift up our community members, especially those who are just having a really difficult time right now with health, finances, anxiety, or grief. We pray that you be with them. We also lift up our healthcare workers, others who are on the front lines of this pandemic, that you watch over them, that you continue to be with our city and our community in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We now move on to the roll call.
Mayor Nayla Isla?
Here.
Councilmember Siller?
Here.
Baldvia Akala?
Here.
Ortiz?
Here.
Emerson?
Here.
Padilla?
Here.
Eger?
Here.
Dobler?
Here.
Duncan?
Yermi, here.
And Lesser?
Here.
We have 10 present.
All right, we move on to presentations. City of Topeka Winter's Operations City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have Jackie Vogel, our Deputy Director in Public Works, here to present about our snow and ice removal plan. Jackie?
Okay, one moment. Do you see my presentation?
Yep.
Okay. Well, good evening, governing body. I am giving the annual report on our winter operation preparations. And just in time for our snow event or next couple of days. You know, our preparation began several months ago. We plan and prepare by working with our fleet department to get our equipment prepared and calibrated. We train our personnel. It's not just the street department, but it's also forestry, traffic, and utilities. We do several hours in the classroom. We do several hours hands-on the equipment. And then we have employees trial run with their equipment on the assigned routes. We communicate with our partners, such as Topeka Transit, 501 School District, the Kansas Central Bus System, Shawnee County, our bordering townships, and the contractor. So we monitor the short-term forecast for the appropriate response. We determine the available resources, people, and equipment. And then we respond and monitor continually and adjust as needed. And then we look at the long-term forecast as well. There's a map of showing our priority routes. The red is emergency. Blue is arterials and green are collectors. These routes reflect approximately 50% of all of our pavement within the city. Local streets represent the remaining 50%. And it should be noted that most local streets are within four blocks of one of these priority routes. You might note that this map also reflects snow zones. These are various blended colored blocks on the map. Last year, we divided the city into 12 different snow zones. Two trucks are dedicated to each zone and the priority routes in that zone. The trucks will continuously cycle and address the priority routes and any trouble spots within that zone for the duration of the winter event. As a result of implementing the snow routes, the snow zones, excuse me, we have found that the priority streets are treated more frequently and employees learning and get to know their assigned routes and any trouble areas very well. You know, each winter storm event is unique, and we approach it specifically based on each event. You know, the forecast to start time, the precipitation type, whether rain or snow or mix, the air temperatures, the pavement temperatures, the wind, duration of the event. And that forecast is continually monitored as it can change frequently during the duration of the event. And we adjust accordingly as well. This approach is more flexible and proactive than previous practices of waiting to respond after its accumulated four inches. We always will treat the trouble spots, such as steep hills during every event in those zones. This approach does not mean local streets will be plowed for every event, but staff in consultation with the city manager will review the conditions and extended forecast and determine if residential streets will be plowed. We also use contractor services. They help supplement our resources. The contractor has drivers and trucks with plows and salt spreaders. As well, if it's required that we have to snow blow the downtown area, they can provide trucks to haul that snow off-site. I think having that contractor available, especially when equipment breaks down or with this COVID, we may be low on staff. It's just another resource to help us address the event. Historically, we've addressed plowing of our multi-lane arterials with the use up to four dump trucks at one time. This was effective, but it took trucks away from the other arterial and other streets to make it happen. In the fall of 2019, four dump trucks were added to our fleet. These are 12-yard tandem dump trucks equipped with a 12-foot front plow and an eight-foot wing plow. The trucks could plow the equivalent of two dump trucks. It can also allow the trucks to stay on their assigned routes while the other trucks can be used citywide on the multi-lane arterials. Here's a picture of that same truck from the rear. The upper-left arrow points to the anti-ice or to the pre-wet tanks. These are filled with salt brine and will excuse me, it will wet the salt material as it comes out the bottom chute, which is the bottom arrow. What this pre-wetting does is it has the material stick to the pavement and then it starts the melting process. And then on the right is an arrow of that wing plow. We also purchased one of these slip-in anti-ice tanks. What this can do is we can remove the spreader out of the dump truck and then slide this anti-ice tank into it. And it can be filled with the salt brine solution and pre-treat bridges and hills and streets. Here's an example of us treating with water, just to get experience with it. You may have seen these presence of lines on the bridges or highways and on streets. This just shows that it's been pre-treated. What this allows is it puts a barrier down and prevents the snow and ice from adhering completely to the pavement and makes it easier to plow off after it does compact. Thank you for your attention. Last year, we didn't have many winter events to give our new equipment a lot of experience, but the experience we did gain was very positive, both from the public and from our own employees. And with that conclusion, I am open for any questions.
Thank you so much for your presentation, Ms. Vogel. Do we have any questions from the governing body? Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thanks for your presentation. Every year, I get called on different property owners that have issues with their street. I can think of one over in Oakland that it's a slope, like a hill, steep slope. Is there a number that you can give us or that is given out that we can make these calls to report those? Because if we don't report them, then they don't go do them. And it just concerns me if there's a contractor on the job, they might not be aware of those streets and stuff like that.
Yes, you can call the street department or the City 3111, and that information gets to us as well. We've compiled a list of all the trouble areas, such as the hills and whatnot. And so those are known. Most likely, we already know about it and we're trying to address it while we're out there, but they can recall us.
Do you have that number at hand, Jackie?
No, I don't. I don't recall what our department number is. I can get that to you though.
Okay, I think that'd be beneficial to do that. And I will send you the address that calls me every single year. I have about four of them and I'll send those to you. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Mayor?
Councilman Padiya?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I just wonder, Jackie, in the event of a snowstorm, like I think we're going to experience some flurries here next week, at least that what I understand. And maybe I've missed it, but let's say we start to get a significant accumulation of snow. Do you or does the city share what they'll be hitting, you know, what streets they'll be hitting with the local news media or our own media within the city so that the public gets that information on a regular basis? Because we get, you know, we get a lot of inquiries, emails, phone calls and stuff. You know, like they run those ribbons at the bottom of the screen that something is happening. Could a ribbon like that be generated so that City of Topeka is now in Phase 1 or whatever it is of snow removal? And these will be the priority of the streets cleared so that people know that? I think that's really helpful. If that already happens and I missed it, that's on me. But just a question.
Yes. The priorities of those streets and that map that I shared is on the public website as well as I communicate with Molly prior to any winter event, telling her the status of our conditions. And the map on the public website also gets updated as we clear the streets. But we can always share that information more frequently and regularly.
Thank you.
Looking around, I see nobody else with their hand raised. Oh, City Manager.
The number that is for streets is 368-3803.
Thank you.
One advantage of sitting in your office.
Councilwoman Ortiz and to be followed by Councilwoman Hiller.
Can you repeat that again, Brett, real slow?
Sure. 368-3803. And you can also call our 368-3111 number, which is our general information number. And then we get forwarded to two streets about that situation. So the real simple number is 368-3111. And that gets, it's a general number that gets forwarded to the appropriate department.
Councilwoman Hiller?
I was going to help out with the 36 to follow up with that. We probably should advise people not to use C Click Fix, even if they're used to that. If they want an immediate communication to go to staff or to learn something, they should call in the case of the snowfall. Is that correct?
Yeah, I agree that in the case of a snowfall issue, they should call. C Click Fix won't get an immediate response. So that would be the preferred action. If after the storm has passed and there maybe is a damage because of the snow plowing or something like that, that might be more in line with a C Click Fix issue. But immediate need related to a slippery hill or something like that, they should call.
Yeah, maybe compliments or suggestions on C Click Fix, right?
Right.
Thanks, Mayor.
All right, seeing no other comments, we now move on to the consent agenda. If the clerk would read.
A is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Bernard Trout allowing and prorating city expenditures for the period of August 8 through August 28, 2020, and enumerated said expenditures therein via minutes of the regular meeting of November 17, 2020, and there are no applications.
We have heard the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of the body?
Move of approval?
We have a motion for approval by the Deputy Mayor, a second by Councilwoman Nager. Comments or questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we proceed by the vote.
Mayor Nayla Isla?
Yes.
Councilmember Siller?
Yes.
Baldvia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have 10 yes. Motion passes.
We now move on to the action items. Action item A, if the clerk would read.
A is a public hearing to consider the advisability of establishing a community improvement district for the downtown Ramada Hotel and Convention Center.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. As the clerk read, tonight, we are looking at conducting a public hearing related to this creation of Community Improvement District at the Ramada Downtown. This was a conversation that started a while back. And finally, Mr. Parrish submitted his application and information, a petition to the city in order to move forward with it. Through different discussions that we've had, we've come to an agreement, a development agreement. And also, we're ready to move forward with the hearing. Mr. Parrish is here tonight to provide us some background and information related to his proposed project and his request. So he's available online.
Thank you, Brent, and Madam Mayor and members of the council. Thanks for having me here. Can everyone here okay in my little venue?
Yes, sir.
I really appreciate the opportunity to come before you, even though it's a little different than I've done in the past. And your willingness to consider this application for a Community Improvement District for the seven acres that contain the downtown Ramada Hotel and Convention Center. This property has served the community for over 55 years in one form or another. Some of it is newer, built in 74, and again, 78, 81 additions were made. I purchased it in 2003 when it was available for the past due property taxes at the time. It's not in very good condition. Was not in as good a condition as I had hoped it would be when I made that decision. And as we started forward in our remodeling effort, there's some things that were not known to us that needed to be fixed. And over those 18 years, we fixed quite a few of them. But as those 18 years passed by, things continue to need repair and attention. So in order to help with major improvements for this property to continue to serve the community, I am applying for this Community Improvement District designation in order to make the improvements that were outlined in our application and that are referred to in the contract. I want to be available to describe as many of those as I'm permitted and answer questions on the intention and the plan going forward. I think it's important, though, for everyone and for me as the owner to reflect on the state of our business and the state of business with all hospitality in the middle of a growing COVID-19 pandemic. It is not easy to say what we will do for certain. We can only tell you what our hopes and plans are going forward. And I can explain somewhat what we've done and what we've been doing this year as the landscape has changed. Jerome Powell said yesterday, the Fed Chief, Chairman of the Federal Reserve, that we are in very uncertain economic times. Whenever the Fed speaks, the President of the Fed, the Federal Reserve Chairman speaks, markets listen and markets respond. And I think it reflects the overall concern about the economy and in particular, my concern over the hospitality industry. The Ramada going forward will have a different business model than it's had in the past, made necessary by, not just by the pandemic, but by changing times, by changing appetites and desires and societal habits. So we are going to emphasize our hotel room sales. We're going to emphasize our apartments. And as we speak now, we have commercial space that is pretty much fully rented. The apartments are about 70% occupied at this point. They are a popular place for members of the Kansas Legislature to rent because of the furniture, the bills are all paid, including cable and internet services. So it's easy to move into the apartments without a lot of expense and a lot of contact with various utility because all of those are included. And typically, when the legislature meets, the apartment's still up. We have had cancellations of events long enough that would take, if we're allowed it, four minutes, all four minutes. We've argued all of them, and they keep coming. But we know there is hope. We know that this will end. And we want to be prepared as we move forward with this new plan of operation to operate this property. I cannot promise you that we will survive this. I can tell you that there has been considerable personal investment in Ramada in these past months when there has not been room sales and many events why the dozens have been canceled. I can promise you that I am doing everything in my power to see to it that this survives and is respectable and continues to be a respectable landmark for this community. And with that, I think it might be appropriate to yield to any specific questions, if there are any, or some direction perhaps from Mr. Trout in terms of what he would like me to speak to specifically that I have not already addressed.
Thank you so much, Mr. Parrish. And for those of you that may not know, when the pandemic hit, Jim was one of the first people to make sure that if the city and our community needed places to keep people safe, he was one of the first people, as he usually is, to say, "We're here for you. Let us know what to do." So thank you for that and for your mentorship to kids in our community and everything you do. Do we have any questions for Mr. Parrish? Councilman Dobler, to be followed by Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Parrish, thanks for appearing tonight. Just a couple of quick questions. This process essentially adds a sales tax to business on your property, right? On the Ramada property. Does not extend off of that. Is that correct?
That's correct. There is one other taxpayer that is a tenant on our property that runs Belle Hair Salon. Most of the sales involved in that business are not sales taxable. There are a few sales of incidental supplies, hair supplies and that sort of thing that are. Other than that, all of the sales that are affected here are room sales or food sales of the Ramadas.
Very good. Thank you. And I understand this is a pay-as-you-go CID, so there's no bonding on the part of the city, really no financial impact to the city at all. Is that correct?
That's correct. The bulk of the investment will come from loans, investor contributions, personal investment, CID, sales tax allocation will help with those various projects.
Very good. I think this is a no-brainer for a historic property that's been well taken care of for the last 20-plus years. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. Jim, I want to encourage you. We appreciate so much what you've done with Ramada and with hopefully Riverfront beginning to perk up and the AT&amp;T building being renovated close by you and the new vendors market on Adams. There's going to be some good company. Even we have an attendant at our Amtrak station at least part-time again. So those are good things. For the purposes of the public understanding, and I understand what you're saying in terms of best-case scenarios so that things can move forward, could you describe what you have in mind? There was quite a list with the application and there was one item that wasn't really described that people might want to hear about that said landscaping. And if you could just describe what you have in mind?
The items that I listed, and thank you, Councilperson Hiller. The items that I had listed initially included renovation to the elevator controls. These are basically computer electronic controls in the elevator systems. They're like small computers that, as we all know, that computers don't maybe work as well five or six years after you purchase them. Although these were installed in 74, and it's time for them to be renovated so they stop in the right place. There's no safety issue so much, but sometimes they don't operate properly and are very efficiently. And it's time for those controls to get finished. This is a very expensive process. I have experienced it with the Jayhawk Tower twice in the decades that I have been involved with the Jayhawk Tower. And it really needs to be done soon as a safety measure and a measure of convenience and customer service. There are three elevators in the tower, one freight elevator and two passenger elevators. The total is around $330,000 for all three of those. We want to start with the passenger elevators first and then proceed with the freight elevator. That's one of the major items. Windows in a building that was built in 1974, as you can imagine, need some attention. In that regard especially, the windows in the hotel rooms were designed to open, and they would open slightly. I doubt any windows in high-rise buildings are designed that way now. It certainly would yield to Neil or somebody who's more of an expert. But from a safety and energy conservation standpoint, those openable windows need to be fixed soon. It's about $600 a window. And as, as you can see over the years of use, that they're a bit fogged over, the seals have been broken, the handles you can't purchase any longer. So we want to start that process for energy saving and convenience for the hotel guests. In it ultimately, and this is planned for, to begin 10 years from now, all the windows need attention. We don't know exactly what that attention will demand until we get, get started doing it. But we had a bid to replace all the windows of $2.7 million. And that, that would be more of an undertaking than I think is, is that we can do now and maybe more than would be necessary at the time. But we have to start thinking about that. Our tenant on the third floor, commercial tenant on the third floor of the tower made a, a condition of extending their lease to 10 years that we replaced the windows on the third floor. So we've already started that and we have a five-year window. No pun intended, we have a five-year timeframe to replace those windows and we've already gotten started on that. There is reference to a number of other things here that are maintenance, infrastructure related. We couldn't wait to begin doing some of the things, landscaping was mentioned and the paving of the parking lot. So since July of this year, we've invested a quarter million dollars in the parking lot of the Ramada and the parking lot across the street, which is near for the warehouse. It just needed to be done. It has enhanced the appearance of the place. If you haven't driven around it lately, you should. It looks about as good as it has in a long, long time. And that, that boosts the image and the confidence of the people to stay there to see that that care has been taken of it. So we couldn't wait on that, but we anticipate an estimated 150,000 more beginning in about five years. That would be necessary because we were unable to overlay the entire parking lot on, on those acres. The, one of the key items that was discovered in our last inspection, and I don't want to imply that there's anything that's particularly imminent or dangerous, but our fire suppression system needs an upgrade. And that's one of the first things we'll do. That's about 50, 55,000 dollar upgrade. And those kinds of things you, it, it's difficult to plan or budget for those things as they wear out over many, many years. But they're of critical importance that we have the latest and greatest safety, life safety systems available to us. So that's, that's one of the listed items. The, the cooling towers, we're pretty disappointed in the manufacturer of our, what I thought was our brand new cooling tower in 2014, went quickly out of warranty and then broke the next day. So we, maybe we, we skimped. I mean, it was about $100,000 cooling tower. But in order to get a new one, it's going to be $150,000. And we know we have to do that because we don't have a backup cooling tower. So what we're anticipating is a new cooling tower with that one that's existing there as a backup. Since the manufacturer wouldn't fix it under warranty or even the guilt trip that I tried, we fixed it ourselves and we've been keeping it running. But we can't run that risk for much longer because if, if something happens to it, it'll probably be in the middle of July and we want that not to happen. Does that help understand some of the items?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Councilwoman Duncan.
Hello, Jim. Couple of questions. So in the proposal that was submitted, it said that the expectation is this would generate $45,000 a year or so. And of course, I know that's based on a lot of variables, so I, I do understand that. But can you talk about the reason for going this route versus looking at rate increase, room rate increases? And why one was, may work a little better for you or not?
Sure, and that's really a, a good question. I think what, what the hospitality and I, I, I want to try to get to the heart of your question. It's very important. There are, since we purchased Ramada, this community has built more than a thousand brand new hotel rooms. There are no more people coming to Topeka now than there were 20 years ago. So every new hotel is built. Every time another hotel room is added, there's more pressure put on the existing property. So rates, there is a rather intricate science to rate management, trying to manage your rates with the demand. In the last 10 months, there's been zero demand. So we get whatever we can get. But when you have demand, then you try to adjust your rates depending on that demand. We have, and, and to, to help answer that question, the hotels when it was originally built, and I, I don't mean to seem flip here at all because what I'm about to tell you is absolutely true. There are brochures advertising that we had 424 rooms in the downtown Ramada, but we've not been able to find that many. Then there was another brochure that spoke of the 399 rooms. Well, we haven't been able to find all of those. We found some rooms that were framed in in one part of the, of the building there on the east side of the atrium. What we did find was one building, the northeast building that had 99 rooms and about seven apartments that were built as apartments. And it looked like it had been suffering roof leaks for about 10 years. It was a disaster inside. We intended to tear it down. Then we looked at how well it was built and we looked at the cost of tearing it down. So it was at that point, we decided to convert those hotel rooms into apartments. So that, that northeast wing became 57 apartments, thus reducing the count from whatever it was, 399 to 300. When we first licensed the Ramada, we licensed it for 256 rooms. Rooms that we could identify that were occupiable, that we had, were in the process of remodeling. About eight years ago, we decided to build more apartments and entered into an agreement with Ramada Worldwide to reduce the number from 256 to 213 rooms. So that is the number of licensed rooms now. There are 124 rooms in the tower. And I think our ultimate objective is to have more apartments and have the tower be the hotel because the demand is not strong enough to drive that kind of inventory. So it, it, it is a matter of what the market will give us. We can raise the rates, but we might lose customers. So we try to manage those rates and what we found, and I found over the last 18 years is that this, this is a very complex, difficult property to manage. And it involves a lot of monthly costs. The average bill, which might be as high as $40,000 a month, it is a, a reflection of, of, of the cost that, that are involved here. Now, I'm happy to tell you that this month is only 19,000 because we're doing everything in the world to shut hotel rooms down and conserve. But in terms of choosing how to go, that there aren't too many financing options available. Since the recession of 2008, hotels have been, new hotels have been able to get financing, existing hotels and particularly a full-service hotel has not. To help in partially answer your question, we are going to emphasize hotel room sales and apartments and try and, and stop trying to be a full-service hotel that answers everything that everyone would want out of a full-service hotel because the demand just isn't there. So in order to get those hotel rooms sales up, we have to have good quality. We have to have the best. We have to have new mattresses. We have to continuously remodel. One of the things we did when COVID-19 hit, we were able to secure one of the PPP loans, but we couldn't hire back any food service people because we were not allowed to serve food. So we hired people back to come and do remodeling to help make those rooms better so they bring more rates. But still, the average daily rate in this community is still hovering around the recession level, 2008, nine, 10 level. It, it does not break $55 or, or and, and the, I, I should say the occupancy, the stroke, the occupancy. So the occupancy, well, the city's peak is around the 55% level. So it, it is a function of rates, occupancy every day, 365 days of the year. And there just isn't the, the, the immediate return available to take care of these kinds of repairs that need to be done without some help.
And just a quick clarification, whether this is from Mr. Parrish or staff, CID would not be applied to apartment, correct? It does not, apartments do not qualify?
Well, one of the, I, I'm not sure I can answer that question. One of the things that we have in our plan is to turn more hotel rooms into apartments.
I mean, the rental, the rentals of those would not also collect the CID, correct?
Oh, no.
It would apply, but it would apply to all other services, including restaurant, food service, room rent, ballroom rentals, those kinds of things?
Yes, yes, I, I, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. You're absolutely right. The, the rental income does not pay sales tax, but the room rental does, of course, pay sales tax, bed tax, both, and also the new transient business improvement tax. So those come from room sales and then their sales tax assessed to food sales and other sundry items that we sell in the gift shop. And the room rentals and the room, the banquet room rentals, I'm sorry.
This agreement, there are several dates that indicate if the work is not done, this agreement can be voided by those dates. It also says that there can be an extension given by the city in case those deadlines are not met. I guess my question to, to staff maybe is, who can, who gives that extension? Is it the city manager or would it come back before the governing body to determine whether that extension would be granted?
I believe that it, based on the development agreements that the city manager can, but I'll, I'll can ask Lisa to confirm that.
To me, I'm sorry, I don't have my video on. Sorry, in my opinion, that would be something that would come back before the governing body. I just think that's one of those things that probably wouldn't necessitate having the governing body say, we're okay with extending it.
Fine with me.
Thank you. Anything else, Councilman?
Yeah, I promise. This time, Councilman Dobler, two things means two things. The first is, do we require in these agreements and at the other locations, I believe this would be our seventh or eighth CID. I noticed some put on this, their receipts specifically that that's what this is and others do not. Do we require that they specifically tell people on their bills or receipts that this is a, a separate assessment?
It's not a requirement and we do not.
And my last thing is, I guess more of a comment or, or at least maybe a clarification. And I can't hold this one against Mr. Parrish and I actually told him this. I, I just have issues, concerns with CIDs in general, depending upon the projects because the reality is they are a sales tax increase. So it's sort of disingenuous to say, we didn't raise any taxes when sometimes we do at times, you know, pass these separate sales tax increases. What I would like to do, and it does not impact this project, but the city manager and I had a brief discussion about this is, I think it's been almost 10 years since we have taken another look at our criteria for CIDs. And I'm hoping and I believe that we're, we're going to take another look at that soon to just maybe make some adjustments to make it more clear on the projects we think really would deserve these or should take their time to ask for them versus others that maybe shouldn't. And again, I'm not referring to this project specifically. I just wanted to put that out there for people.
Yes, we've had that discussion and that is our intention is to take a look at this policy again. If you look at when the policy was signed, it was signed quite a while back. And so it is one of those ones where we need to analyze and make sure that we're still going the direction that we intend to go. We've had some pretty good projects that have come through. And so at this point, I think it's meeting its purpose, but I, I would agree that it's probably time we sit down and review that again.
Thank you, thank you, Jim.
All right. Any other questions from the governing body? See, no, yes, Councilman Padilla.
No, thank you, Mayor, no questions. I'm just going to echo what Councilman Dobler said about the historic value to this community that Ramada in has been for us. My time when I was visiting with Mr. Parrish, I made a comment that for me, ever since I've been here in Topeka and seen that property change hands and now the, the much better condition that it is in. And I remember the number of events that have been held there that it seemed to be for me like a community hotel or a community place for a, a lot of the organizations in our community to hold their events because of, it's a grand place and, and it, and has gone through some changes. And I appreciate everything Mr. Parrish has done to continue to keep his employees employed and through this tough time and to use that time to continue to do, make improvements. I, I, I am in support of, of this and, and I thank Mr. Parrish for bringing it to us. And I, it shows again that we're in Topeka, we still try to adapt to our conditions so that we can continue to have progress in our community. So thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mr. Parrish.
All right. Any other questions?
Mayor, if, if there are no other questions, I may just make a closing statement if that would be okay.
Absolutely, sir.
With regard to our intentions, when we put together this plan and work with the city turnover turns, we we hadn't fully been confronted with the impact of COVID and the pandemic and the impact it's having on this industry. So I intend with all the energy I have to continue with this project unless it is made impossible for economic reasons not to do so. As we get into these projects, we will learn things. And I, I know all of you know this because you've dealt with even the city's buildings and the city infrastructure that you, that constantly needs attention. The older things are, the more attention sometimes they need. And you don't always know what you're getting when you begin to dig the hole in the ground in the street and what the impact is that, that's going to be. And we're faced with that somewhat as well. We get the best estimates we can. We know the fire suppression system is, it, it is a pretty certain amount and it, it is doable within a certain period of time. And the overall cost isn't as, as difficult. Some of the other items are a little bit more difficult to, to know what they will be. So I'm hopeful that this isn't just a, a, a hearing and a vote and we proceed down the road. But as, as we have additional roadblocks and hurdles that I can come back to this council and explain the circumstances and get your support to continue by showing you what we've done and what's changed. If anything changes, that needs you, for I need your help. And we need to have some additional attention to, to these contractual deadlines. With that, I thoroughly appreciate the ability to come before you at this first Zoom city council meeting that I've attended. And one of these days we'll be back together again.
Absolutely. So I just want to remind everybody that this is So I just want to remind everybody that this is a public hearing. And even though we don't have any other individuals signed up for comment on this issue, it is an opportunity for anybody that would like to say, from the public that is with us, to make any other remarks. So this is the opportunity for anybody else to, from the public, to make remarks with regards to this issue. If there is nobody from the public that would like to make any more statements, I think that at this point in time, we will close the public hearing. At this point in time, what is the pleasure of the body?
I'd move to approve.
So we have a motion for approval by Councilman Padilla, and we have a second by Councilman Dobler. Lisa?
Mayor, there's no, there's not an action item associated with this. It's on for next week.
Awesome. It's in the action item?
It's just the public hearing.
Okay, so, wonderful. So then that means that we are setting the public hearing?
No, no, you just completed that. You just completed the public hearing. And then next week, on the 8th, there'll be the ordinance to establish the Community Improvement District?
I'm not all here today, guys. Forgive me. All right, well, the public hearing is closed. We now move on then to item B. Sorry, guys. Item B, if the clerk would read.
Here's a resolution introduced by the members of the Public Infrastructure Committee, comprised of councilmembers Neil Dobler, Tammy Emerson, Mike Lester, and Mike Padilla, recommending approval of certain fleet replacements for 2021.
City manager?
I'll actually defer to Councilman Dobler in order to cover this item, since he's chair of that committee.
Councilman Dobler?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we heard this discussion at our committee meeting a couple of weeks ago. And it's appropriate, I guess, that we started this meeting with a presentation on snow removal, because this, this action will allow Public Works to buy three desperately needed combination truck, dump truck, and snowplow, as well as replace a couple of bucket trucks and two motor graders that actually are maybe older than some of our kids, I don't know. We did vote unanimously to send this to the council and recommend approval. And with that, I will make a motion to approve.
Actually, Councilman, before we go into the motion, I do believe that, oh, no, we don't have any public comment on this item either, is in item B. So we do have a motion, that we have a second. Deputy Mayor seconds. Do we have any comments or questions for the chair? Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you. I don't know that this is really directed at the chair, but I really appreciate that we've got this committee. I found when I looked at the, at this list, at this shortlist, I thought, well, what's everything else? How do I understand how this fits? I appreciate that the handouts for the group were posted on the website. I credit Liz for getting me there. But it might be helpful for us in the future to have some sort of synopsis of what the whole fleet plan is. I know that the committee's going to work on it further anyway, just to kind of have an idea of where these items fit in all the things that we're doing. There were some comments that were shared at the committee level, for instance, about, about how we bought some fire trucks and some police cars with leases at first, and then we stopped doing it, like the chief changed or something. And that wasn't even really so. That was a pretty intentional recovery plan that we had when we first got started with the, with the fleet kind of rebuilding our streets, our fleet, our buildings and everything. And so kind of sharing that big picture with us might be helpful to all of us. And thank you for your work, because I know the committee's had some really, really deep work. And I'm really pleased to see that the staff has provided such good background to them. That's it, just comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dewey. So we have a motion, and we have a second. Additional comments or other questions? All right, seeing none, we proceed with the vote.
Mayor DeLa Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Aldivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have 10 yes, motion carries.
Motion carries. We now move on to the non-action items. I had let the team know before the meeting started that my brain is not all there. As you guys can see, not only do I look miserable, but I feel miserable as well. And I had asked the deputy mayor to run the rest of the meeting. Deputy Mayor, I am handing it off to you. I will be watching, but you guys don't need to watch me here sneezing and coughing in the middle of the meeting. So checking out. Pray that my ENT finds a brain.
It will, Mayor, thank you. Have a good night. All right, our next item is a discussion of the 2021 legislative priorities. If the clerk could please read that?
A is discussion regarding the legislative priorities identified by the governing body to be addressed or monitored during the 2021 legislative session.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Tonight, we are on the verge of a new legislative session. And with that in mind, it's time for us to talk about what our legislative priorities are. Tonight, we have, joining with us, our lobbyist, Whitney Damron, to run through what we consider to be the priorities for the next session for the city of Topeka, and then some additional items that will follow, along with the fact that we support the League of Kansas Municipalities' efforts that they do with the various items that they've identified. This time, I've asked Whitney to go ahead and go through information regarding our priorities. Whitney?
Thank you, City Manager, and good evening, Deputy Mayor Emerson, members of council and city staff. Happy to be here visiting with you this evening. And I do appreciate the opportunity to work with the city another year going into 2021 and look forward to success in the legislative process. A couple of comments in advance of kind of going through the document that I provided to the city a couple of weeks ago. Obviously, we've had elections in Kansas at the national level. From the state of Kansas perspective in the legislative process, the House and the Senate have always been dominated by Republicans, at least for the last 30-some years. Continues to be that way. There's been a tension back and forth between moderate Republicans, conservative Republicans, and coalitions that have been created during that time. In the primary election this year, there were six moderate Republicans who lost their race for reelection in the Senate or in the House that would appear to firmly put control of the legislative process in the hands of Republicans and conservative Republicans. They achieved and maintained a two-thirds majority in both chambers. The Republicans controlled the Senate by a 29 to 11 majority and 86 to 39 in the House. If those groups stay locked up, it gives them the opportunity to override gubernatorial vetoes, which they generally couldn't do on a whim during the 2020 session and before. Also creates the opportunity to advance constitutional amendments to the ballot where before, they perhaps didn't have the votes to get that done. The kinds of issues that, that those majorities could come into play would include Medicaid expansion, probably not going to pass next year. We could see a constitutional amendment on abortion, giving the legislature the authority to enact restrictions on abortion in our state. We could see a constitutional amendment on appellate selection. The confirmation process brought into the Supreme Court justices, which we just had a new nominee advanced up yesterday. So change of process, probably a little more attention, tension between the governor and the legislature going into next year. But we see that every year. Probably the good news going into 2021 is the budget is not as bad as originally predicted. The consensus revenue estimating group gets together twice a year, in April and November. In April, they, they set kind of the final budget for the legislature to work from, to get out of town for the year. And then in November, that's the number the governor uses to set the budget for the next fiscal year. In April, we were looking at estimates of being underwater in the current fiscal year by some $500 million and possibly as much as $1.2 billion in the red, based upon budget projections for the next fiscal year. That would have had a dramatic impact on all of us had that trend continued. In November, the numbers looked better. As I recall, the number, the positive number for the current fiscal year is like $356 million in the black and in the red for the next fiscal year of around $150 million, which in legislative terms, that should be manageable. So going into the next legislative session, I met with city manager on November 18th. In advance of that, we had exchanged a number of ideas and thoughts and what is happening with the consideration of municipal issues by the League of Kansas Municipalities, Kansas Association of Counties, and other municipal interests. And we talked about what the city of Topeka priorities might be for the coming legislative session. I believe you have a document in front of me that lists support for renovation, rehabilitation of the docking state office building in that complex. There has not been a final plan put forth, but there is interest from the administration and from legislators to redevelop the docking building, perhaps bring in KDHE lab and other municipal, or other state offices into that building, perhaps even building additional structures on parking that's located to the south of the docking building. That issue is likely to come up in the legislative process next session. In the budget committee, the administration appears to be moving forward with a proposal to rehabilitate the docking state office building, and we want to be involved with that process. Number two is continued support for the state transportation plan, and specifically what impact that might have for the Polk Quincy Bayou Duck project. I know in my conversations with KDOT that they enjoy a strong working relationship with the city manager, believe that they are working in concert with city of Topeka on that possibility. We'll see what happens with the new administration at the federal level, whether that leads to additional transportation funds coming into the state of Kansas. But KDOT is committed to Polk Quincy, and that becomes a timing issue for both the city and the state, seeing our revenues continue to go into the transportation program. Some issues of municipal issues, local control. There was a great deal of time spent in the tax committees in 2020 on a bill called the Taxpayer Transparency Act that would have required cities and counties to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution if they were going to spend more money in the next budget than what they're spending in their current budget. That's kind of in layman's terms what that bill was going to do. It also would repeal the tax law. That bill passed both the House and the Senate by a substantial margin, had bipartisan support. That bill was vetoed by the governor. There never was really a clear opportunity for the proponents of that legislation to get together for an override. But we do expect that bill to come back in 2021. In meetings that I've had, along with other municipal lobbyists with the league and the Kansas Association of Counties, there is an effort to craft a compromise approach to that legislation. It is getting close to a final draft of the bill. The league has begun to start the process of sharing it with people who have proposed the Taxpayer Transparency Act legislation and in efforts to see if they can come to some kind of a compromise agreement with that legislation next session. There's also been efforts, primarily coming out of Johnson County, on trying to change the way certain properties are valued by the local unit of government through the appraisal process. It's been referred to as the dark store theory. So if you have a vacant big box retail store, should it be taxed or assessed differently than one that has an ongoing operation? That, that issue has not really come over to other parts of the state of Kansas, but given the attention it's received in Johnson County, it very well could, and it could lead to legislation. So that's, there's been a legislation on that, but it was not seriously considered during the 2020 legislative session. It was actually brought by a legislator who was opposed to changing that process for bringing it about for purposes of discussion. But that issue could come up again in the next legislative session. And a number of the comprehensive tax bills that have been considered, there have been efforts to try to bring in internet sales tax. U.S. Supreme Court decisions essentially grant states the ability to impose state and local sales taxes on internet sales. There's been some discussion about whether there should be some kind of a safe harbor provision in those, those bills, such as small businesses that do less than $100,000 a year in sales. Should they have to collect and remit for those sales? Because it could potentially be complicated and cumbersome for them to do that. But let's get the big sellers who are doing an increased amount of sales in the state of Kansas to collect and remit. Governor's Office kind of threw a curve to that issue earlier, or actually late last year, when they said, "Sales tax is imposed on sales in Kansas, period." She asked the Department of Revenue to begin enforcing that. That led to a request for an attorney general opinion. The attorney general opined that the governor didn't have the authority to seek that or to impose a sales tax on all sales in Kansas, regardless of where they came from, the internet or from a brick and mortar institution. Governor's Office said, "Well, that's your opinion. We are moving to enforce." No litigation has been filed in regard to that. And since the time that was put in place by the state, the state has collected some $75 million in additional revenue that they would not have received before. So it's doubtful the legislature wants to give that up. But we're likely to see continued consideration of what kind of a framework could bring in other sellers who were not brought in under or not remitting under that action by the Department of Revenue. Other issues that you see in, in the document that has been provided, that have been discussed in league and Kansas Association of Counties meetings that could come up next session, that are kind of of general interest, could include revisiting the governor's emergency powers authority, something broader than just what has occurred under the pandemic, but for other emergencies, natural and otherwise. There is an interest in revising that area of law. Police reform, budget timeline adjustments. You see that in the League of Kansas Municipalities' priorities. Community mental health funding, annexation issues, peer-to-peer vehicles, housing, other e-commerce issues that have come up in the past and star bonds. Also attached to my remarks is a list of the top priorities of the League of Kansas Municipalities. And historically, city of Topeka has supported those if they are consistent with the interest of the city of Topeka. And I take my direction on that from the city manager as well, on generally a case-by-case basis. So it's kind of a quick run-through. I'm happy to respond to questions. Our session starts January 11th. House and Senate leadership meet on December 7th to elect new leadership for the next legislative session, and then we'll be off and running.
Thank you, Mr. Damron, for that report. Any questions for Mr. Damron? Mr. Duncan, go ahead.
Some of these are questions, is just two things I think need to be either on this list or on our radar. One's for discussion, and I guess one's on the radar. I don't know if next year, because nobody knows what Congress is going to do, but if there will be additional CARES money or additional funds sent to the state, I would like us to start putting a bug in our legislators' ear that cities, particularly those of our size, 100,000 more plus, should get more input into the process as opposed to just giving it all to the counties and letting them do whatever they are going to do with it. So just something I think we should at least be watching and and sort of working, working our legislators for if any additional money comes down. The second thing is an issue. As we all know, when we went through, as we've tightened our budget with COVID, we put out 70-plus options for individuals to retire. A percentage of those individuals took that early retirement. All of those individuals, for the most part, had were vested in the capers. We had a percentage of those employees who were within a year and a half, give or take, of where they would be in a position where they could have taken that early retirement. They just weren't hadn't hit that magic number with their capers yet. During that time, I had this genius idea, of course, I thought, why can we not buy them out? In the long run, that would have saved the city additional funds, guaranteed their retirement, and allowed us to then free up those positions and make some decisions. What we found is that is not legal under current state law. I will not speak for the people at Capers, but I did have extensive conversations with them. And and I asked them why that was not current law or some ability by municipalities to, within a certain period of time, say, a year and a half, buy out in situations like that capers. I was told that they would probably not be opposed to that idea, but they were not in a position to put that forward. So I would like us to have some conversations with me, I guess, and the city manager, and maybe with the League of Municipalities about putting something forward that might allow that to occur so that in the future, when we have these kinds of situations, we are providing to help those employees who are close to retirement and also free up some budget issues for us. So I'll just put that out there today, and hopefully we can have some further conversations about that as we get closer to January. Thank you.
Very good.
I agree. I think that's something that would be good to be able to have as a tool. And I think it wouldn't be only us as a city that would see some benefit in that. So it's a good idea.
I know on your first issue, I've seen significant discussion on that in the media surrounding Kansas City, Missouri and their county. They were just under the threshold of getting money directly and have had to ask for funding or their share of money from Jackson County as well as other surrounding counties. And it's a frustrating process for the municipality.
All right, anyone else? Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Whitney, is there any more talk about the blighted homes?
There has not been in the legislative process. I know legislators, there are certainly some who still support the issue, and and we have struggled with that in the legislative process. I would say that the biggest obstacle is leaving the Senate that we've had in the past, whether that makes a difference to other legislators who are left behind remains to be seen. Quite frankly, that issue was brought up in a primary congressional race in the second district and candidate that was attacked for having supported that piece of legislation. My opinion has been politicized to the extent that it makes it very difficult in the legislative process to advance that because of the way that that bill approached abandoned housing.
I I don't want to leave that behind. That is still a big issue that we have, and I don't want to leave that behind. I don't know how we can put that on our list, whether it's just to continue to support that. But it's it's still a huge issue.
Sure. I think we can continue to look for opportunities and discuss with people who did support it in the past about revisiting that issue if there's an opportunity.
But on our list, it's not on our list, am I correct? As one of our goals.
It is not in the document I provided to the city, no.
Right. And that's mainly because over the last three years, well, since I've been here, as we've attempted to push, pursue it, it's gotten nowhere. It has been, continue to be. It's one of those opportunities that if it's available to us to pursue, and we can find some legislators to be able to champion it for us, then we'll pursue it. But the last two sessions, it's been blocked. And so for us, we haven't pursued it as a priority issue for this year, but it is an opportunity issue that we're monitoring. And Whitney knows who to talk to, and I'll make sure that he has those, ask him to have those conversations as the session goes to see whether there is any opportunity to pursue it.
Well, I don't know about other council members, but I'm just not happy with that. I'd like to see it on our list. And I don't know if we need to vote on it or whatever. I understand the pushback that he gets. But this is our list of what we support and what we want. And it's not on our list, and it's a huge problem to the City of Topeka.
Right. And that's why we're having this discussion. Obviously, the reason that we have a discussion first, like we are tonight, and then approval in a week is for me to find out if there are issues such as you're bringing up that you don't see on our list. So we add them. So if the majority would like to see that, we can sure look at doing that.
Okay, I would like to encourage my colleagues to let the city manager know that you would support that. I understand the pushback that we're getting. The problem that I have is if we take it off the list, if it's not there, it might not be a priority. And I and I want us to still support that. So if you could let him know that you support that, to put that on the list, I would appreciate that because that's just very, very huge. It's huge. And I and I do, I understand it's a political game, but we have to continue to make sure that we keep that on the list. That's my two cents. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
You're welcome. And I'll just say that that's also an issue in my district, and I would also support that being one of our issues. Councilwoman Valdivia, go ahead.
I would also support it deeply.
Fantastic. Thank you. Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you. The solution may be to have that issue on our list, but not in the particular legislation. Obviously, there were some problems with that. And and it doesn't make us look good to chase something that wasn't going to work or that a lot of people didn't think was going to work or for Whitney to do that for us. So it may be, again, that the solution could be to have the topic down. And we need to, we're both on public health and safety, Councilwoman Ortiz, too, and and say, are there, legislation isn't always a solution. So we're trying something new. We do have some things on the books already. And so examining that internally as an issue to see if we can figure out some ways to advance that could be good for us as well.
Thank you. Councilwoman Valdivia, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I also see here on my calendar, Whitney, that there is a Shawnee County delegation meeting. I think it is on the 9th. Is there any way that you, as our lobbyist, can go up there and speak to this being something that, you know, the council or a number of people on the city council would like to see, to get that in their ear? Like the ears?
Thank you, Councilwoman. I failed to mention that. Yes, the Shawnee County delegation typically meets in advance of the legislative session. They are scheduled to meet on the 9th. And they generally meet all day or until they get through everyone. We are on the agenda. City of Topeka is on the agenda. At 9:30 a.m., they start at 9:00. And I will present what the city's priorities are. I believe city manager participate as well. It should be at least streamed. I don't think they'll have video, but they'll have audio that you can access if you want to listen in. It's going to be in room 546 of the State House.
Will that be then one of the topics you can bring up?
Yes, yes, I will. I will highlight what our priorities are as approved, I believe, next week at your council meeting. So that would be two days in advance of the delegation meeting.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Questions or comments for Mr. Dameron? All right, I'm not seeing none. So, Mr. Dameron, thank you for your report. We appreciate your work on behalf of the city. And with that, I believe we go on to the next item.
Thank you for your time.
Be as a report on recommended 2021 implementation plan for the adopted citywide housing market study.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Well, after multiple meetings and discussions, the Implementation Committee has developed an implementation plan. And tonight, Bill Finder, who chaired that or helped assist the run through of the items, is here to provide an overview of the plan that will be considered at the next meeting for approval. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I'm going to share my screen. Okay. You all can see that. So, thank you. Yes, as as noted, back in July, the governing body charged us with reporting back to you in 120 days, which we were ready for, a implementation plan to kickstart the citywide housing market study and strategy. I just want to start out by noting that there were a lot of people to thank here that get us to this spot. But suffice to say, it did take a village to get to this spot. And and I am very thankful for everybody that participated in this. So let's start there. Back in our process, how we got to here, we use the steering committee from the housing study. And we expanded upon that to add affordable housing providers and representatives from the CAC, GTP, Landlords Association. Council members were on it as well as the study sponsors of the of the housing study, folks who funded that. So we had about a 30 or so people on our committee. We met three times. We started in, again, with the first committee meeting in August, talking and defining our scope of what we were going to accomplish. We developed action plans at the next meeting for the tactics that we selected and then determined how, what and what metrics we would be using to measure. I want to note in between, or I should say, after each one of these meetings, we, I had the honor to go present to the CAC sort of what those recommendations were and get their feedback. We also, in between the first and second meeting, divided up into subgroups and to to work on each of those action plans that is in the document. And we also expanded that to include some bench strength, which is folks with expertise that weren't even on the committee, but had some subject matter expertise. So it was a a lot of people coming together to move this forward in 120 days. So as I mentioned, the first thing we looked at was scope. The motion that was made indicated that you wanted a starting implementation plan in 120 days. We needed to interpret that a little bit, and we came up with that basically says, where do we start? Where do we want to start? And the scope ended up folding into an action plan for 2021. Again, that kickstarts that study. We, so it did not go beyond one year. And as you'll see later, we recommend we continue to do this sort of process every year and and adjust and stay fluid. We also wanted to make sure that we were on track with how this relates to other core housing documents. You know, we have the CON plan, we have our comprehensive plan, neighborhood plans, we have the housing study now. So how did this implementation plan fit in? Well, this was a direct descendant of the housing study. But we neglected to add any new tools or initiatives or really ideas that weren't already in one of those three core housing documents. We were trying to move things forward with this IP as you see. And then the core of the document was action plans and metrics, which I'll go over here next. So as I mentioned, action plans were developed for each one of the tactics that the committee selected that they thought could be activated in 2021. If you remember, there was about 26 or so tactics in the housing study. They were narrowed down a little bit for us, but the committee narrowed them down even more to recommend what was ready to be activated. So they selected seven that those were the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, weatherization, take-two tendency or second chance tendency, aging in place, rehab assistance, land bank and downtown area housing. We further separated those into two tiers. Tier, the first five were deemed to be sort of the tier A, which are ready to be activated in 2021. And then tier B, the final two, which were more, needed more planning before they could be activated. So in theory, they should be ready to be activated in 2022 if things go accordingly. Again, each tactic has its own action plan. It has its own steps to take next year. The organization responsible for leading that or supporting it and when that should happen during the course of the year. Okay, last part of this were the metrics that we determined. We thought that it would be most appropriate to base these metrics on the the key findings of the study. We have 150 pages of of analysis and recommendations and findings that were very important to guide kind of the priorities here. So so what were the biggest challenges in meeting our future housing needs? Those were the things we wanted to make sure we were doing better on and making progress on. And we broke those down into a five-year horizon, so looking what we can achieve in the next five years as opposed to a longer 20-year period, which the study had. So those those six key findings that we're measuring are going to be lack of quality affordable housing stock. That's one of the findings, and I underline quality there. We need to define what constitutes a quality unit that is affordable and then measure that. Limited senior housing options, trying to have more of those cost burden households, which really speak to the percentage of income that households spend on housing. If you spend more than 30% on housing, you are cost burden. So we need to lower that across the board. Core neighborhood disinvestments, we will track how and how much investment is in our core at-risk and intensive care areas. High housing vulnerability speaks to homeless prevention and minimizing evictions so that we have a more stable population staying placed in in their home. And then lastly, limited housing choices or typologies. This speaks to having a more diverse housing stock in the community, particularly when it comes to new construction. We want to do more, we want to see more than just detached single family. We want to see more of that missing middle that is necessary for more affordability. So those were the the metrics we would be measuring. And so to wrap up here, next steps is we're here before you, hoping for acceptance of the IP by the governing body next week. So we can can have the responsible organizations roll up their sleeves and begin implementing those action steps in the plan. As I mentioned a little bit earlier, we do think it would be a good idea to repeat this process on an annual basis. As I mentioned a little bit earlier, we do think it would be a good idea to repeat this process on an annual basis. Again, check back in, make sure that we are hitting our targets, that we are nimble to changing conditions and then set forth a new action plan for the next year. And then lastly, we do recommend updating this market data that drives a lot of the criteria and key findings here every five years. You don't have to do it every year, but we think that's a real, we don't want to wait 20 or 30 years, whatever we waited for before. So this is a that's, that's it in a nutshell. Like I said, I want to thank a lot of folks who are mentioned in this document. A lot of people put time and effort into this. I will stand for any questions at this point. Thank you.
Any questions? Yes, Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Bill, I do have some questions. I don't know if you can refer back to the slide, but where it came under cost burden households and getting acclimated to this very new process. You know, we have the tier A and then we have the tier B. But specifically when we're talking about cost burden households, is this going to be a separate dialogue that's going to take place during this first year? Or is this going to be dialogue that's going to happen in the second year? Or is this all going to be looked at as all of these moving parts start happening if this is approved?
Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala, the cost burden measure is going to be an outgrowth somewhat of the housing affordability in the community. There's the, so there's a housing side of it and the product and the housing unit, weatherization, lowering those housing costs for people. Then there's an income side of it that we don't have as part of this housing implementation plan, which needs to be addressed, but it wouldn't be part of this housing plan.
I don't think I understood what you said. At all.
My apologies.
I didn't get that.
So there's two ways of attacking a cost, lowering the cost burden. One is to lower the cost to your housing costs.
Right.
The other is to raise your income.
Right.
So we can tackle the housing cost part of it through our action steps, but the raising income part of it is not, was not part of the consideration here. That's, that is a legitimate conversation, just that wasn't part of what we were talking about.
Okay, so I guess there's a couple of things off of what you just said is that the more affordable housing, you know, if you look through the study, it's talking about things like income. It's talking about things of, you know, how many units of rental housing there are. And, you know, a really high percentage can only, renters can only afford to pay like $500, you know, a month and the challenges that that poses. So I'm going to try to ask this question a different way. What kind of tracking is going to be happening during this first year? And I would say into the second, third and fourth years of this that is specifically dealing with one of the issues that somehow we just cannot seem to gather any steam on to talk about it at any length. And that is the very key findings of the impact of redlining that happened to specifically African Americans, to folks of color, that in these core neighborhoods that we're talking about, that they are still trying to get out from under. When are we going to start incorporating as we look at what we're doing, starting to get valuable data on the above-average amount of African Americans that rent and that also have higher eviction rates than the rest of the population in Topeka? And that the African America population is like about 10.6%, Latino is like 16, you know, percent. But those two, black and Latino are some of the most vulnerable populations in these metrics that we're looking at. And somehow I think that we're going to be missing the boat with all of this wonderful information and the really good meetings where I learned a lot and I'm sure I have a lot more to learn. But I think that we have to really start addressing and talking about the equity issues that are missing in this. And this report talks about equity being needed. In almost, in every state, I'm sure, and in every, you know, locality, you're looking at there has been a huge divestment and equity issue with black homeownership. So what are we doing? And I know that this is just the starting of the project, but it's something that wasn't talked about at the meetings. And it needs to be addressed because otherwise we're only dealing with some of the issue. We're not dealing with all of the issue. And it's not just Topeka that is dealing with this. Again, it's across the country. And there are local governments that are finding ways to either start doing more tracking, start, you know, doing more asset management that are starting to look at what the the answers are to help some of these blatant disparities that are happening in our city. And I think that if we don't engage in that conversation, that we are doing a section of our population a disservice and continuing systems of inequity. So you know, that's, I really think we need to take a look at that. I don't know if it's developing a special committee. I don't know if it's, you know, getting tracking mechanisms into what's going to be happening with weatherization, you know, what's going to be happening with the second chance tendency or all of that. But somehow there seems to be this avoidance of the topic and, and I'm just going to keep bringing it up. So I thank you, Bill.
Councilman Duncan, go ahead.
Well, I sat in on this committee. You know, when we adopted this study, one of the concerns at the time and the conversation we had was we're really good at adopting studies. We're not always good about following through on those studies after we've taken all this great advice and paid for a lot of input. And that was why we, we gave this group the act of coming up with a real action plan that's functional, that's realistic and gives us something we can actually do starting next year. This action plan does not cover all seventeen points that were in that study. Because one of the things we all agreed on was that isn't realistic. What it does do thankfully is does provide us a timeline to look at some of those additional things so that they don't fall by the wayside. And it does give us a few actions, particularly the Housing Trust Fund, which I do think is a small but a stepping stone to helping a lot of our different areas and different communities finally find some housing and give them a leg up. Well, I really, so I want to say that I do appreciate at least everybody addressing one of my concerns was that this wasn't going to go anywhere because this clearly is a very clear action plan with some very specific objectives that I think are very tenable and reachable. And lastly, I just want to say, I can't say enough about all the different people in our community that sat in on all these meetings, met on their own when we weren't having the formal meetings, put together these action plans, took time out of their day. Some of them, this is their livelihood. Some of them, it's just something that they want to do to improve their community. And I just want to say thank you to all those individuals for coming together and working and understanding the objective that we were trying to reach. And more importantly, for showing us once again that when we do collectively work together, we actually can get a few things done. Now, this is step one. We actually got to go do it now. And so I think that's a responsibility of some of us on this council to do that and to assist staff in doing that. But I am overall, while I understand it has a few deficiencies in some areas that we have to continue to work on, I will say that I am overall pleased and very happy with what's come out of this. And I think we can actually get something done as we enter next year. Thank you very much.
Okay, Councilwoman Hiller, go ahead.
Thank you. As the person who initiated the motion to get this thing turned around with a framework at least in 120 days, I just want to compliment again as my colleagues have everyone involved. For those who don't know, we've got the best of the best on that team and Bill has done a good job with it. But we have not only the best of the best that we have, but we have excellent affordable housing providers. And I think everyone is involved. And I, for a long time, have wanted to see some sort of coalition. We've had the Homeless Task Force and we've had some other things, but this has really brought back to get, brought together people from the home builders to the poverty agencies and all the affordable housing providers and counselors in between. And it is, it's exciting to see them as well as folks like the Community Foundation and so on that helped get the study done. And the dynamic is really strong. And so yes, there's more work to do. And a lot in that plan says we're going to keep figuring out the details in the course of this year, which is fine, but we were looking for a lot of things. Sort of across the table to Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala, I've been working with the Neighborhood Initiatives Group, a group of neighborhood folks, as I think everybody knows. And when they put together their recommendations, they had sort of a second string of them of things that worked directly for the trust fund to do or the housing study results, but that were important. And one of them was, as you've mentioned, minimum wage. We just talked about the legislative agenda. It's a place for that, you know, as we talk about any issue. If we really need to park it someplace else to advance it, maybe we need minimum wage on the legislative agenda when we talk about it again next week. So that we do move that piece. Something we were happy about with the, with the way the plans came out, and I say we as the Neighborhood Initiatives were from the from the neighborhoods is that there are subcommittees, they are still working as I understand, and I still feel new to the group, but working on the details of some of things like the weatherization plans and the rehab plans in terms of what the programs might be. And the Housing Trust Fund as well as it develops, you know, you kind of have to figure out what you're going to do with it in order to raise the money for it. And so they're still working on that. We were really pleased to see, one of the things people have wanted at the neighborhoods is is some smaller things that either neighborhoods could do and get out or some more flexible things that individuals could patch into to do their own homes and make a difference on their block and so on. And and the groups were, just so everybody knows, they were responsive to that and also left it open that they would be continuing to develop those programs so that we should stay tuned, for instance. And so, again, wanted to thank them for that and let everybody know that that's out there. So thanks, Bill. And Brent and everyone who worked on it.
Okay, anyone else have questions or comments for Mr. Finder? If not, thank you, Mr. Finder. We do have two gentlemen signed up for public comment. The first is Mr. Steve Vogel. I'm not sure if he's on here or not. Mr. Vogel, are you on here? Not certain if he is. I'll tell you what, I'm going to go ahead and move on to Steve Shifflbahn. See, Mr. Shifflbahn is on here. So if, Mr. Shifflbahn, if you want to make your comments, please.
Thank you very much. Yeah. I'm with, here to speak on behalf of Topeka Jump in support of the housing study implementation plan for 2021. We applaud Bill Fiender and the team of city staff for the work they've done to facilitate the development of this plan. We highly regard the support of local stakeholders who took part in this collaboration. Topeka Habitat for Humanity, Cornerstone, Topeka Community Foundation, and name only a few. We support this 2021 implementation plan as an incremental step forward towards building at least one of the strategies, the Housing Trust Fund, up to a goal of $1 million a year of public funds along with $5 million of private investment each year. A total of $6 million is what is needed. $6 million provides a capacity of creating 200 additional affordable housing units each year. There are two things we really like about this implementation plan. You will get, first of all, you will get to see how the trust fund works in action. Second, as a result, we will have more weatherization, aging in place for seniors and rehabilitation of existing housing stock. There will be at least an estimated 50 more decent affordable units available by the end of 2021 than there would be without the Housing Trust Fund. So I ask you this question. What will it take for you to be able to vote in favor of this plan? I can say again. What will it take for you to be able to vote in favor of this plan? I am listening for your questions and concerns. I'm listening for your reasons for support as well. I hope to leave here and the listeners on live stream hope to leave this meeting with an idea of what will it take for you to be able to vote in favor of this plan? Members of Jump are in a big, major meeting tonight, or else you'd have more people signed on to the live stream. I stand for comments and questions.
Okay, I see none, Mr. Shifflbahn. Thank you for your comments, sir. And I just asked again if Mr. Vogel is on here. I would note that Mr. Vogel had written comments that are on page 220 of our packet. So that might be that he's letting that be his testimony. So Mr. Vogel, unless I hear you the next, okay, I'm sorry. I saw a note from Brent here. Okay, great. The written comments are in your packet, page, starting on page 220. Any closing comments for, from anyone on this item? All right, seeing none, we go to the next item. I'd ask the clerk to read, please.
See his discussion regarding the five-year plan can, excuse me, discussion regarding the five-year consolidated action plan 2021 to 2025 and fiscal year 2021 annual consolidated action budget.
Mr. Trout.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. There are no major revisions or revisions of substance to the consolidated plan that was presented back in August. Staff is available here to answer any questions that you may have regarding the con action plan. You know, this was postponed from the time when we were at the budget until we could present. So we're running this in tandem with our implementation plan because there may have been an item that would need to be changed in the con action plan. Con action plan does need to be approved before the end of the year. So that's why we have it scheduled for the next meeting, December 8th, for approval.
Okay, so am I to understand correctly, Mr. Trout, that will not be a formal presentation of this? Is that correct?
Correct. There isn't anything that's really changed from before, but if someone has reviewed or has a question or recommendation or anything related to it for us to consider, we are available to answer those questions or provide comment.
Okay, thank, I do actually have, I'll tell you what I'd like to do then. We do have three individuals signed up for public comment. If, if the council doesn't mind, I'd like to have them speak first and that might either spur questions or there might be some things that need answered. So not seeing any strenuous objections. The first one I've signed up is Michael Bell. Mr. Bell, are you there? Michael Bell, are you? Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Councilwoman Hiller.
Just, the people that are on that list are people who are part of the Neighborhood Initiatives Group and I will take some responsibility. And I will take some responsibility for confusing them. We were all going to sit, they were all going to sit in and watch this. And I encouraged them to sign up. And then it turned out that if they signed up, they had to be speakers. So if, if any or all of them are not on, it's because of confusion on.
No problem. I appreciate that. I'll, I'll just go ahead and call them in just in case they are. The second is James Proud. I do see him on here. So, Mr. Proud, if I'm saying that right, would you, would you like to speak, sir?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay. No problem. I like that, short and sweet. The last is Ann Marshall. Is Ms. Marshall on? Ann Marshall.
She was going and got confused and didn't sign up at time.
No, no problem at all. Well, in that case, I would ask if there are any questions or comments from the governing body on this item. Councilwoman Hiller, go ahead.
Thank you. Hopefully, everyone on the council got an email from me today on behalf of that neighborhood initiatives group. They are working to look at refreshing, they have put together a packet of recommendations regarding refreshing the entire system. And I mean refreshing, not changing it out totally, but refreshing the system of how the grants are made and how the neighborhoods are encouraged to grow and thrive and make strategic changes in those neighborhoods. In the process of that, we looked at that con plan and whether to make immediate changes. We were encouraged by Corey Ryan, who said, you know, this can be changed. It doesn't have to be changed upfront if things are in process. But they did have some specific changes to the language just to offer this time for the changes in the mission statement of the plan. I don't, unless somebody wants me to, I don't need to read it. I think you all have copies of it. The intent, there were very few word changes, but the intent was to open up the language that it appeared to be oriented toward really concentrating dollars in limited places, to just opening up that language to recognize that strategic investments can be made in neighborhoods in a lot of different ways. And so as we move forward, not only with different ways of strategic investments, but different sources of funding, such as the trust fund, for instance, that's coming in that we could take advantage of to work in our neighborhood. So I will have that for next time to propose as one amendment, perhaps the only one, to both the 2021 budget plan as well as the 2021 to 25, five-year plan. The mission statements in both are identical. So the group wanted to propose that change at the appropriate time.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else want to make comments or questions on this item? Okay, seeing none, we go onto the next item. Mr. Clerk, could please read?
He has updated 2021, 2023 stages of resource area for future federal and city funding.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Tonight, Latoya Bennett Burnett, excuse me, is with us tonight from Community Engagement Division to update us regarding the 2021-23 SORT process and neighborhood selection. Latoya?
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening. If you'll give me just a second, I'm going to share my screen. Maybe.
It's on.
Okay. So beginning in 2004, the City of Topeka instituted a new concept for the investment of housing and neighborhood improvement funds called Stages of Resource Targeting, or SORT, as it is known. Through the SORT program, the city engages with a selected neighborhood to gather community input on future planning and development initiatives, public improvements, housing projects, and other important community needs. This process allows the city to develop a relationship with the neighborhood and better determine neighborhood priorities for where to target improvement efforts. Eligible neighborhood improvement associations are invited to submit applications on behalf of their neighborhoods in February of each year. Authorized members of the Citizen Advisory Council review and score the applications for SORT. The Citizen Advisory Council consists of one member elected by each NIA, or Neighborhood Improvement Association, and three at-large members elected by the mayor. The purpose of the CAC is to provide recommendations to the City of Topeka Division of Community Engagement on community needs as they relate to the allocation of city, state, federal, and trust funds for the preparation of the City of Topeka's Consolidated Action Plan. Once selected, the designated neighborhood is guided through a three-to-five-year process of planning, design, investment, and implementation, known as the three stages of SORT. Stage one, year one, the city provides resources to develop a comprehensive neighborhood plan that outlines the current conditions of the neighborhood and identifies neighborhood-specific goals for future infrastructure, housing, and other quality-of-life improvements. Stage two, year two, after the neighborhood priorities have been identified and outlined in the neighborhood's comprehensive plan, the city begins design for priority projects and soliciting and accepting applications for housing rehabilitation in the target areas. Stage three, year three through five, the city implements these projects through investment of up to $1.7 million of the City of Topeka's capital improvement funding and up to $330,000 of housing and urban development funding. The CAC members authorized to review and score the SORT applications include only those members from neighborhoods that are not applying for the SORT designation. And only one member from each neighborhood may score an application. Authorized CAC members were provided with copies of all submitted applications. Of those members authorized to score the applications, nine members submitted their recommendations to the Division of Community Engagement. Each member scored the applications and then all of their scores were totaled. The final score was emailed out to all CAC members and NIA officers on October 12th. The eligible CAC members present at the November 4th, 2020 meeting voted in favor of recommending the Valley Park neighborhood for the 2021 SORT designation. Here is the most recent 2017 health map for the proposed recommended neighborhood, Valley Park. The 2021 Stages of Resource Targeting application process begin with the Application Workshop hosted by the Department of Neighborhood Relations for all eligible NIAs on February 26th of this year. Applications were made available in the Department of Neighborhood Relations office and on the City of Topeka website on February 28th. Due to COVID-19, the application deadline was extended from July 31st to September 4th. Application packets were then picked up or hand-delivered to eligible voting members of the CAC between September 18th and October 5th. All final scores were received from eligible CAC members by the Division of Community Engagement on October 9th. And the final score tally was emailed out to the CAC members and NIA officers on October 12th. Eligible members present at the November 4th CAC meeting voted in favor of recommending the Valley Park neighborhood. I am here today to present that recommendation. Beginning in 2021, the Community Engagement Division and the Planning Department will assist the Valley Park neighborhood in developing a neighborhood stakeholders committee to include residents, community groups, other organizations, institutions, and local businesses in the neighborhood. This committee will work with the city to develop the comprehensive neighborhood plan and identify neighborhood priorities. The Planning Department will present the final comprehensive plan to the Planning Commission and governing body next fall. In 2022, the Public Works and Utilities Department will begin design for identified priority public improvements, and the Housing Services Division will begin soliciting and accepting applications for housing rehabilitation in the neighborhood. In 2023, the City of Topeka will initiate construction and housing projects. That concludes my presentation of the 2021 SORT neighborhood recommendation. I thank you for your time and consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for your presentation, Mrs. Burnett. Any questions for Mrs. Burnett? Yes, Councilwoman Nagier, go ahead.
I actually don't have a question, but I just have some words of encouragement. This Valley Park is within the, within District Six. It's just south of Washburn. And having done a lot of door knocking and getting to know the neighborhood a lot better, it's really wonderful to see that all of this hard work has paid off. I know that they have worked very hard on this application, and I just congratulate them. And thank you for all of the effort that went into it by the CAC members as well. Thank you.
All right, Ann, looks like Councilwoman Hiller, go ahead.
Yes, just a comment so that people are not worried about what my thoughts might be on this. The Neighborhood Initiatives Group has a variety of people in it and strongly feels that we should change the SORT program in the future. We've worked a lot with staff on that and also very much respect the process that has gone through so far. And so I will support Valley Park going through in the SORT program as it has been profiled, that's not the right word, as they have been structured in the past for this coming year. People have done a great process and they follow the protocols that were there. So just so, in case anybody wonders, we'll be bringing forward some suggestions for changes, but not to get in the way of this process being completed and executed.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anybody else? Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala, is that a, okay. Seeing, okay, seeing no further questions. Thank you again, Ms. Burnett, for your presentation. And it is 8:04, and we typically take a break right now. So why don't we go, why don't we take a break now and reconvene at 8:15? Okay, welcome back, everyone. There were three individuals signed up on our thing for public comment on that last. They're the same that were for the previous, but I assume it was the same issue. But I guess, better error on the side of caution here. So if Michael Bell, James Proud, or Ann Marshall is on and want to make any comments about the updated, update on the SORT, I will give you that opportunity right now. It's Michael Bell, James Proud, or Ann Marshall. Okay, not seeing them. So it looks like we're on to the next item. Mr. Clerk, would please read?
He has discussed provisions to the municipal code. First section is 2.255030 related to the composition of Human Relations Commission members. And the second is chapter 9.20 entitled Discrimination.
Okay, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. The only comments I have are changes were proposed about a year ago to this part of the code. And it was remanded back to the Human Relations Council for consideration. Since then, they've had a number of meetings and we've had a very important Supreme Court decision that occurred related to this item that has actually had an impact on what would be recommended for changes related to this code. These changes are reflected now to take that ruling into consideration. And also the Kansas Human Relations Commission's decision to consider such cases for civil rights violations in the future. So with that, I know that Councilmember Nagier has been working on this a long time. And so I would request that turn it over to her.
Councilwoman Nagier, take it away.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and thank you, City Manager. This is something that, once I was, it's something I ran on. And once I was elected, it was something that I got involved in. But this started long before I was on the council or before it was brought to the governing body. This has been in the works for about two years. And an active citizen who's been working on this pretty much since that birth of this idea has been William Nagier. And he is on this call for any questions kind of concerning the history and the path that this took because it took kind of a winding path because it ended up involving our Human Relations Commission. And two of our commissioners, Commissioner Montoya and Commissioner Williams, should also be available to answer any questions that you might have for them as well. But the basis of this was to make sure that this was a community that promoted equitable treatment of individuals concerning their sexual identity and sexual orientation. So both as people present themselves to the world and the people that they choose to love. With all of that, there has been some other motions to go ahead and clean up the language, make sure that we're updating everything and that we're protecting other people who may be discriminated against in the, in reference to genetic material, which can concern people who have predispositions to different diseases. Making sure that they are also protected in employee, employment situations and housing situations, as well as those of differing veteran status, people who have served in our military forces. I will turn, if it's all right with you, Deputy Mayor, I would like to turn it over to William Nagier, who would have more information on the different aspects of these modifications and the history of them. Thank you.
Sure, absolutely, Mr. Nagier. See you're on there. Go ahead.
Good evening. Like the council member said, this is focused on prohibiting discrimination in areas of particularly housing and employment. The city manager mentioned that Supreme Court decision, and this goes beyond that. The Supreme Court decision is only based around employment discrimination of gay, lesbians, and transgender individuals. This, as the council member stated, also speaks to genetic information, which is becoming more relevant as people are getting their DNA tested for like family ethnic history. It speaks to veteran, potential veteran discrimination. And so it really does go beyond that and provides that city protection. I believe that most of the issues that are being spoken to in the ordinance are, have already been spoken to. And so I don't want to take up too much time. I just, since I have been throughout a number of different steps of this process, wanted to make sure I was available so that any specific questions like that I happen to know that, oh, like this got added or put in or taken out for this reason, wanted to make sure I was available. But I will then turn it over, if the Deputy Mayor is okay with it, to Commissioner Kim Montoya and Lauren Williams. I believe that Kim, or Commissioner Montoya, has a bit to speak about where the Human Relations Commission is on the specific wording of the ordinance as proposed by Councilwoman Nager.
No problem. Commissioner, are you here?
Yes.
Okay, please, please go ahead.
All right, good evening, Deputy Mayor and all of the governing body. We, I'm just here to talk on behalf of the Human Relations Commission. I'm, I'm just going to reiterate what the City Manager spoke about earlier. We did have a meeting on November second, and the Human Relations Commission on the ordinance that is being introduced to you this evening by Councilmember Nager was reviewed by the Commission. We did also have Lisa Robertson, the City Manager, in addition to Brett Trout, our City Manager, were present at that Zoom meeting, and they participated in the discussions. So all the questions and the concerns that were raised by the Human Relations Commissioners were addressed, and the minutes that you have received will reflect that. And so the Commission recorded a unanimous vote to support this proposal, and so now the Human Relations Commission is now asking for the governing body to review and approve the final draft of the NDL presented by Councilmember Hannah Nager.
Okay, and I understand there's one more commissioner perhaps on here who would like to speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, go, go ahead.
This is Commissioner Williams. Nothing really more to add, but except to echo what Commissioner Montoya has said, that we really want you to consider this ordinance. And my position, as well as the Human Relations Commission, is that, and I've always said this from the beginning, from years past, is that we want our city to reflect our compassion for everybody that lives here. And we have a compassion for people, and that's what we want to make sure that we represent, is a compassion for people. Whoever they are is a compassion for people, and that's where we want to start at. And we want to make sure that that compassion that we show, it is fair to everyone that lives here. And there's maybe something that we don't understand, but we ought to, we ought to always understand compassion. And so with that, we will turn it back to you, Deputy Mayor, but we do appreciate this opportunity, and that's what we want to leave you with, is that we want to make sure that we always feel compassion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any questions for the Commissioners or former Commissioner Nager from the, from the body? Council, Councilwoman Duncan, go ahead.
Well, I also don't know who this should be addressed to, I guess, whether it's Councilmember Nager or any of the commission, okay. The way I read this, and it's okay, please correct me if I'm wrong, is this feels like three changes in one ordinance. The first would be some changes to the HRC itself, even though they're somewhat minor, but just some, some tweaks there. The second would be changes to current penalties of law that already exists, and then the third would be some additional definitions or expansion of protections. I just want to make sure that I'm sort of reading that right, and so my question is, if that's, A, correct me or affirm that that's kind of what's happening, and B, talk to me about why we chose to put those into one ordinance instead of sort of take them on individually.
Councilwoman, well, anybody who wants to answer, anybody who can answer.
Yeah, like I said, I don't know who.
Let me, let me try. You're right, Councilman. That is exactly what we've done. They are three distinct changes that are being made or asked to be considered to be approved. When we looked at it, there were a number of issues that we felt were related, and that if we were opening up the discussion, as the, as the Human Relations Commission had talked, that they were pertinent items to discuss at similar time. They were somewhat interrelated, because as you look at the membership, they were looking at changes as to who they would pursue for members, and then also what protective classes, and then also the penalties. It was time to update those based on the work that the Legal Department had done, and so that's why they're all included together. Lisa?
Yes, Deputy Mayor, if, if I may, Councilmember Duncan. Initially, when this all started, it was, you know that there's been this United States Supreme Court decision that Brent referenced earlier that occurred back in June, and initially when this started, the thought process was to set up an enforcement mechanism so that it would give more authority to the THRC to actually hear some of the local complaints, because at that point in time, gender identity, identity and sexual orientation was not, those kind of cases were not being heard by the state organization. They were being heard by the EEOC under the category of sex, but it wasn't official until the Supreme Court decision came out and stated that the transgender and gay, lesbian, gender identity would be incorporated into the category of sex under the Civil Rights Act. So now, all of those cases are legally being heard by the EEOC, as well as in August, I think it's the KHRC indicated that they would be hearing those cases as well. So at that point in time, that's when there was no need to have a local enforcement mechanism, and that was all in, you know, the changes to the duties and responsibilities of the THRC. That was in Title II. And then you had to actually blow that through into Title IX, which kind of set up the enforcement procedure. Since the Supreme Court decision, all that's kind of come out, but that's kind of where all of it started, where Title II was kind of flowed into Title IX. I don't know if Will has any other, you know, thoughts on it, but that's, that was my recollection of how Title II and Title IX kind of morphed together.
That sounds exactly right. It was stuff that while we were poking around, we found and was useful to be updated.
All right, any other questions for the Commissioners or for Councilwoman Nager? All right, seeing none, Ms. Williams and Ms. Montoya, thank you for your time, and Mr. Nager, thank you. And move on to the next item, which is the Zoom. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry, Councilwoman Hiller, I did not see, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Well, the little bit of a tag team between Hannah and me, and we did not have the script down, let's just say. This is something that's been a long time coming, in the course of working on it this month, and then with the holiday intervening, there are some technicals that we've been working on with Hannah and I and Lisa. There also had been issues that some of us have worked on for years about exact, about clarifying the role of the Commission, that they opted to not, not really push and address right now. In my opinion, we need to get it all fixed first, and what we talked about over the last couple of days was, was requesting a little time to be able to work on the technicals and, and get back with the Human Relations Commission about those, and also perhaps not rush it, but within about three months, be able to turn around and actually work on updating not just the membership, but the roles and responsibilities of the Commission. We all know that, that there was a little stumbling recently about that, too, and, and it's only fair to fix that. My understanding from City Manager is that the Commission is going to change its membership substantially in the next three or four months, and so I think we owe it to them to spend that time preparing something and spending a little more time at the council level to clarify that as well. So what we have for, for this evening would be to, a motion to, well, I'll back up a little bit. The idea was maybe to split the, the title, what they call Title II revisions, which are about the duties and responsibilities of the Commission itself from the Title IX, which is the enforcement pieces. And, and I'm, I'm going to quote something that Lisa wrote for us today, so I, I'm not sure how many people have it. I think the clerk has it, Lisa has it, City Manager has it, Hannah and I have it. The motion would be to direct the City Manager to remove the Title II revisions from the proposed ordinance that's at, at hand right now, so that a more in-depth review can be conducted by the THRC and then submitted to the governing body for consideration within the next three months, and to, to defer discussion on the proposed ordinance to December eighth, so that amendments to the Title IX revisions can be made and presented for discussion by the governing body at that time. That would be a motion.
So if I could ask just a clarification, Councilwoman Hiller, on that. Is your thought that we would again next week discuss just a portion of this? Is that, was that what you're saying?
There would be enough that, yeah, I don't think it would take very long, but in order for the council to have a time, time to look at it at a time that they were not expected to act immediately, it's going to take, the, the Commission meets on Monday evening, so that's very convenient, but if they meet on Monday evening and, and some things get worked out in the ensuing few days, and Lisa said she would help do the research on, on a couple of the things, it, rather than a photo finish on an action date, it seemed like it would be better to bring, to really work on bringing a draft back for next Tuesday to be voted on on the fifteenth. There is a real, real desire on the part of the Commission to get at least the protected classes sections adopted by the end of the year and move on, so we didn't want to defer the whole thing, but we wanted to get both parts done.
Yeah, that's something that would kind of also address some of the concerns that Councilwoman Duncan had of kind of this, kind of this mess is not the right word to use, but, you know, kind of a messy, a messy. I'm sorry.
How it's evolved.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, well, we have a motion then by Councilwoman Hiller to sever a part of this and bring it back next week as a discussion item for a possible action on the fifteenth, so I have a second.
A second.
Okay, a second by Councilman Vidia. Any further discussion?
I would like to discuss this a little bit further. This is something that Councilman, Councilmember Hiller did bring to me coming up to today, and that I know that I've had conversations with other council members one-on-one saying that we want to make sure that we are supporting the Topeka Human Relations Commission as much as possible, and making sure that they have the right tools and that we are able to give them the support that they need. And I know that, yes, as this has evolved, that there have been different components that have been, have been fed into this. I also, in discussing this, because Mr. Nager has been a part of this since kind of the very beginning, I know that he had a few comments on that, and I did want this to be done in a public forum. Forum, so is it okay if I yield the floor to him at this point, Deputy Mayor?
Unless there's objection from anyone else. Go ahead, Mr. Nager.
Thank you. I think that giving some more direction to the HRC could be very beneficial and helpful. I, from my view, I don't know that it makes, if that broad strokes vision is not in conflict with what currently is in the Section Two adjustments, then I don't know that you need to wait for the current Section Two adjustments. If there's a problem with the govern, or if, if the governing body is not happy with the Section Two adjustments as content, then I, by all means, go ahead and defer it, but if they stand by the content of it, but want to defer for a discussion of what else could potentially be added on in addition to the Section Two, I don't see why you couldn't do one step now and then another step later. And I know that there's a, a apprehension about if you make a change, then you have to wait six months for a potential other change. And I guess I would remind the governing body that this very specific ask of prohibiting discrimination in housing and employment has taken approaching, taken approaching two years to address, and so I think a broad strokes vision where you're going to need to speak with the Human Relations Commission and the governing body back and forth, I just don't know that it's a given that it's actually going to get done in six months' time.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hiller, go ahead.
That six-month thing was absolutely part of the, the work, that the thought that went into segregating Section Two. I don't know that there's any problem with what is being proposed, but if we were going to go back in and work on the duties and responsibilities, didn't want to be prohibited from doing that for six months. And so by segregating it and setting a goal of getting it done within three months, then the whole thing would be done and we could move on. This has hung on for years. That, that section has been hanging on for years and years and years, too. And so that, that seemed like the best way to get the whole thing done, to the work immediately to get the protected classes done and clarify some things in there, but not set it up, so we had to wait at least six months to, to finish the work on the other part. So it's not a disagreement with the changes, at least not on my part, of what's being proposed, but instead, let's finish the job and not ball it up and have to kick it down the road again.
Okay, Councilwoman Nager, do you, you want to make a comment?
No, I just wanted to make sure that that discussion was had in a public forum, because it's something I've heard plenty about in the last three weeks, but I wanted to make sure that the community knew where people stood and kind of how this evolved and where we are now.
Right, and I, I guess, Councilwoman Nager, you know, I guess if I could ask you, as a colleague on that, do you have an issue segregating it the way Councilwoman Hiller is proposing?
I do not personally. I want to make sure that as we move forward, it's done in, in step with the Commission and making sure that, like I said before, we're supporting them as best we can, and that the only thing that gave me pause was that this is what they gave us at this point. But as long as we're moving forward with them and making sure that we're supporting each other, I think that will be the best for all. So I totally understand where she's coming from, and I.
Okay, great. Any further questions? And is everyone clear what we're voting on here? Sure, would the, and I don't know, which should the clerk read it, or what Councilwoman Hiller?
I think she's got it.
I've got it.
Go, go ahead, please.
Motion is to direct the City Manager to one, remove Title II revisions from the proposed ordinance so that a more in-depth review can be conducted by the THRC and then submitted to the governing body for consideration within the next three months, and two, to defer, defer discussion on the proposed ordinance to December eighth, so that amendments to the Title IX revisions can be made and presented for discussion by the governing body at that time.
Okay, thank, thank you, thank you. So any further discussion? Any questions? If not, I'd ask the City Clerk, please, to call the vote.
Okay, Deputy.
Yes.
Councilmembers.
Yes.
Valdiviaco.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Abia.
Yes.
Nager.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
And Lesser.
Yes.
All right, we have nine yes motion carriers.
All right, thank you, everyone, that, that got on for this, this discussion. The next item, if the clerk could please read.
At this discussion of the license and management fee proposal associated with the transition of management and operational functions at the Topeka Zoo and Conservation Center from the city to and conservation center from the city to the Friends of Topeka Zoo, FOTS, in conjunction with a proposed public-private partnership.
Sounds like an easy and quick topic. Mr. Try, go ahead and take it away.
Well, thank you. It's easy in the sense that it's continuation of a discussion that we've had. But it really tonight is an opportunity for us to go into more depth regarding looking at the finances and how the model that we're considering impacts our financial status and how it is how it moves forward in the long run for our city. So both short-term and long-term solution. And so with that, Jessica Lemandola, our administrative and financial services director, and also Jeff White, our financial advisor, are going to go through some information tonight that was sent to you in an email yesterday. And has also been offered to you for opportunity in the future to have a one-on-one conversation. So this really is an overview for everyone, and then also realize that based on what you hear tonight, you may want to schedule another further in-depth discussion with them. Some have already, and I'm glad to hear that you have. It is available for you if you would like that time. It's a very complex issue, and so time spent will help you to understand. But so that we have transparency related to what we're trying to do, this presentation on this information provides some basic information out there for the general public, and also a discussion that you can have as a group on this related issue. So from that, I'll turn it over to Jessica.
Good evening, governing body. Thank you for the opportunity to talk again about the the management agreement and how that impacts the city finances along with the zoo finances. So tonight, the goal really is to have a discussion about the concept of a management fee, the model that has been distributed to the governing body regarding the comparison between continuing forward with our existing funding model versus a public-private partnership. And then to elicit some additional feedback from the governing body in terms of how do we want to move forward? Is this a concept that we're interested in, that we're supportive of? And if that's the case, we would also like to discuss the impact on the the near-term general fund budget and the different ways that we could address what is essentially a funding gap. So, you know, the goal for this evening is to have that broader discussion, get feedback from you in terms of how you'd like to proceed. We, as the city manager mentioned, we also have started to have one-on-one meetings with council members to discuss the 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 model and also just the overall financial impact. And so we have a lot of those already scheduled, but if you don't already have one scheduled, we would like the opportunity to to discuss it further with you if you have questions. And what we would like to have, you know, by the end of the week, is an idea, if you want to move forward, what the options that you feel most comfortable with in terms of addressing the near-term budget gap. And what we'll do is that we will take that information and then next week, at least in the the current schedule, next week, we would come back to the governing body and say, this is the consensus of feedback that we've received, and here's the the toolbox or the way that we anticipate based on feedback to address that funding gap. So in terms of tonight, we are gonna break down the discussion into two distinct parts. The first is to, again, discuss the management fee in general and what that means, what the 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 zoo's budget is as, you know, as a impact currently on the whole of the general fund. And then I'll turn it over to our financial advisor, Jeff White, to discuss the the intricate detail of the financial model that you've seen. So he'll walk through the the memo and then can refer back to the Excel file as questions arise. So after that is discussion is completed, we would encourage questions at that point. And if the the feeling is that this is still an option, we will, we can also move into a discussion about potential options to address. So we're gonna break it up, though, in those two pieces. And, you know, one of the reason that we continue to kind of break those up is that I think the goal of the discussion on a management fee is really to think about, you know, is the 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 growth, the expansion option that FOTS has presented, is that the way forward for the zoo from the governing body's perspective? And if it is, then we start to build a financial model around that. So to give you just some a general idea, the last audited financials that we have is obviously 2019, and the zoo's budget was about 2.6 million. That's before netting out the earned revenue related to the zoo. And the TGT allocation and earned revenue, it was approximately $898,000. So on a net basis, we allocate about 1.5 mils to the zoo in 2019, including that revenue. And then you can also see in the memo that was provided, we do have already issued debt related to the zoo, and that is approximately about a half a mil based on 2020 mil value. And so then, looking at 2020 and 2021, the overall zoo budget doesn't grow dramatically, so it's about the 2.6 million. The the difference is that in 2020 and 2021, the revenue makeup will not be as strong, right? Without having a robust activity in public, we're not we're not receiving the same type of revenue we have in the past, so that the burden on the general fund will be greater in 2020 and 2021 in terms of having to support the zoo. So what is a management fee? So essentially, in the in the negotiation and discussion with FOTS, they've presented what they need to run the zoo in a way that they feel comfortable, that they'll be able to meet industry standards, they'll be able to maintain the zoo in a way that is consistent with best practices, and then also to start thinking about the long-term capital projects. So essentially, what FOTS has requested, they've broken out the support for both operations and then the 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 general maintenance into two separate pieces. So operational support in the first year would be a little over 1.8 million, which is approximately 1.56 mils. And then they the the capital maintenance would be about $380,000, which is about a third of a mil. And so the total support that they would be looking at from the city would be about 2.2 million. And then also, the agreement, as it stipulated, all revenue generated that the city would normally get also goes to the zoo. Over the lifetime of the agreement, the management fee does escalate, which is consistent, I think, with most public-private partnerships that I have seen at least. And so what does the city get for this management fee? I think that's one of the the biggest questions regarding this proposed transition. And essentially, all operating costs for the zoo and the capital maintenance costs, and then those larger capital projects, get shifted to FOTS. So the city would be responsible, obviously, for continuing to make the the agreed-upon management fee. We would also be, at this point, passing on TGT revenue. We would net that against the management fee. The city would continue to pay existing debt. The the asset, the zoo, as an asset, continues to be the city's responsibility ultimately, regardless of the transition or not. So the city would continue to pay that debt service for existing issuance. And so I think that, you know, the the feedback we received in the last couple of weeks from the governing body is that additional information was needed to evaluate just what it costs in a government model versus the public-private partnership model, and then to compare those. So I think, you know, with that in mind, the overall zoo budget of the general fund is about 2.3%, so it's not a huge portion. And sometimes those smaller departments, their priorities tend to to get less funding as the years go on. And some of our larger, more priority departments that maybe have more essential service components tend to receive additional funding. And so I think in this in this situation, that what the positives would be is that the city gets to have a defined cost obligation to the zoo over time. So we know what we're gonna pay every year. The downside is that that flexibility in terms of being able to limit staff growth or shut down, I don't know, an exhibit or something during a rough year, obviously, that flexibility is diminished. So at this time, I'd like to hand it over to Mr. White to discuss the model and kind of walk you through the overall memo.
Mr. White, go ahead.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, members of the council, good to see you this evening. I am going to do my best to share my screen here and hope that you will be able to see it. So what I'm sharing here is the exact same model that that staff has provided you for your, you know, fun, late-evening enjoyment in in going through this. I'm gonna talk briefly about how this is built. As the city manager mentioned, we're certainly happy to take a deeper dive with you at your convenience this week into how it's built, what the assumptions are. But I I do want to walk through this fairly quickly and kind of get to the summary. We built this in direct response to Mr. Dobler's request last week for a simple line chart, which we did, we did provide, but but really, many of your questions kind of went to the fundamental numbers here. So what we've tried to do is, to the very best of our ability, without overcomplicating things, is provide an apples-to-apples the cost of the zoo, the net cost of the zoo over time, if the city were to maintain the zoo as a as a department, city department, versus the FOTS proposal for a public-private partnership or P3. We've attempted in as many places as we can to use the same assumptions that FOTS used in the zoo advisors' models, so that we don't have competing assumptions where we can avoid that. So for instance, we have taken the zoo advisors' attendance projections as as our attendance projections in this same model. So as you compare their model, which is really looking at a FOTS-focused, what does it take to run the zoo in a in a kind of a private operator model, whereas this is really taking a look at impact to to city budget. So the first tab here is is starting with the the public option. And just to kind of give you a a little bit of convention about the the model that you see here, numbers in this bright blue color are user inputs. And so in this particular case, we've we've plugged in historical attendance or attendance information. You can change anything that you see in the model in blue to your heart's content. It shouldn't blow anything up. It shouldn't change the way that the model functions. So if, for instance, you believe that $785,000 might be an aggressive attendance revenue projection for 2021, probably is, then you can easily change that number and it it will flow through the rest of the spreadsheet. The numbers that are in black are either calculated cells or references. You can certainly change those. There's a good chance you'll kind of blow up the mechanics of the model if you do. So just kind of keep that in mind. So we've built in historical information from 2013 back to kind of give you a runway to see how things have changed over time. So for instance, you can see that zoo attendance revenues to the general fund have been variable over time with with a pretty strong growth pattern between 17, 18, and 19 before we got to the current 2020 COVID year. And then you'll see that our 2021 projection comes right out of your adopted 2021 operating budget. And then the numbers turn to black here in 2022, and the reason for that is that's a calculated cell based upon attendance projections. Those attendance projections, you you might recall, the zoo advisors' model gave, their presentation gave kind of three outcomes depending on your assumption of attendance growth at the zoo over time, a static option, which is pretty much kind of keeping things the same as they are today, a growth option, or a or a decline, right? And so you can toggle this cell in D4, and that will change the assumptions about about attendance going forward and change the the balance of the numbers accordingly. Same thing on the expenditure side, and the expenditures are driven by some calculations below that, again, you have the ability to change. So you can change assumptions about how much of an increase you 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 think you'll be able to charge the public going forward on attendance, how much you think expenditures at the zoo will grow over time, and those types of things. Again, anything in in blue is a is a is a user user input. So this gives us the public side. And then what we attempted to do was to take that very same format and information and do the same sort of modeling, assuming the FOTS P3. So again, here, the historical information remains the same through 2020. We've assumed in 2021 that we have a clean break on January 1, 2021, just to just to make the math a little bit easier. So you can see our attendance revenues to the general fund go to zero for 2021. That's because the proposed FOTS agreement would have all of those attendance revenues collected at the gate and go to FOTS's checking account rather than the the city's checking account. As Jessica mentioned, the TGT dollars remain. We've got a revenue item that comes back. Again, this is this is subject to continuing discussion, but the idea would be that the zoo would continue to 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 contribute to the city's insurance program, and that's why you see that $80,000 coming back. Jessica mentioned that the proposed contract with FOTS has two pieces, an operating piece, about $1,840,000, proposed for 2021, and a capital piece, and those two add up conveniently to $2.2 million, which is the same amount that Jessica just just highlighted in her in her conversation. So we take the revenues that come in, we net the expenditures against that. And again, in the in the FOTS P3 model, the expenditures are really contract obligations, and those result in a net subsidy of the general fund to 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 fund the zoo. So we use all that to kind of feed two pieces on the summary tab, which is the very first tab in the spreadsheet that you have. So the first one looks at at the general fund focus only. So this is looking at what is the net cost of funding the zoo today when we consider both income and outflow in the public model, and then going forward. And then the same thing if we were to to implement the the FOTS P3 proposal. And you can see that for 2021, what we're showing here is that the the FOTS-proposed public-private partnership implementation would actually result in a net cost to the general fund of about a quarter million dollars more than what the city currently has budgeted for for public support, presuming the zoo were to remain a city department. Couple of things I want to note here. The city does not have any sort of general fund allocation for capital in 2021 or 2022 or 2023 for that for that matter either. And so the FOTS option does include that $380,000 capital contract obligation that's in there. So that's certainly a large part of that difference. The other thing I would note, as I mentioned, that maybe $785,000 might be too high to assume for attendance revenues in 2021. If we just assume it falls somewhere in between 2019 and 2020, again, if the city keeps the zoo, it is it is obligated to to sort of suffer the impact of that attendance projection not being not being correct. In the case of FOTS, it's really their problem, right? You're exporting that that revenue risk, as we talked about last week. You can see the difference in that case. If we make that change, results in a much smaller difference between the two. As Jessica noted, as we talked about last week, generally in these in these availability model kind of P3s, the the operating cost for the P3 tends not to produce a significant amount of savings over time. The savings really derives in in other areas. And so what we're showing below is a kind of bigger-picture focus to include not only general fund, but also debt service fund, because one of the promises that the zoo FOTS P3 model proposes is that it becomes, FOTS becomes responsible for funding significant amount of future capital investment in the zoo to funding significant amount of future capital investment in the zoo to improve the exhibits, to drive attendance higher and those kinds of things. And so when we factor in what the city would have to pay in debt service, again, presuming that it debt-financed each of those projects in the years noted. And you can see the assumptions built in, simple, simple payment formula there, four percent over fifteen years. We, when we factor that into the to the to the public model, we then compare that to the same approach in the P three model where FOTS is responsible for that. We come down to a bottom line that looks very different from a kind of total cost or total package where the city is upside down for the first few years of the contract. But by the time that avoided debt service would start to kick in, presuming the city were to maintain the zoo as a city department and fund the improvements, you can see that the the annual savings begins to to accrue going forward. So really, the the, again, the reason to do a P three is is not necessarily to save money, but it's to transfer risk. One of those key risks is revenue risk, driving, driving gate attendance. Another one is the risk that the city avoids in in being responsible for making investments at the zoo that the expert zoo advisors tell us is necessary in order to maintain the zoo as a as a vital tourist attraction in in Topeka and driving the attendance that way. The the one other thing I would note, you'll see a key difference between this cell down here at the bottom, which I will attempt to highlight here if I can move my windows out of the way. You can see that this is showing roughly a $715,000 gap versus the $235,000 gap that I mentioned just a second ago. And that results from the fact that a portion, about $400,000 of the city's budget allocation for the zoo in 2021, and in fact, all the prior years and all the future years going forward, results in a payment not outside of the city organization, but to other city functions for internal services. So facilities and fleet are a couple of examples. IT also fits in that budget as well. While there would likely be some cost reduction for those functions not having to to support the zoo any longer for fleet purposes, facilities purposes, or IT purposes, the the, as Jessica mentioned, the zoo's two percent, two and a half percent of the total general fund. It's not like those functions are going to see dollar-for-dollar reductions in their in their overhead costs when the zoo goes away. There there's a there's a fraction of a person in IT, for instance, that's supporting the zoo. They're not large enough to have their own dedicated IT staff. Those IT staff members happen to be shared with other city departments as well. And so if the city were to implement the the P three model in 2021, in addition to having a a larger operating cost largely caused by the obligation to fund the capital, there's also an internal service charge that needs to be overcome as well, because those costs are not going to go down dollar-for-dollar again when the when the when the zoo departs. So I'm going to stop there because that that really kind of takes us through the the first piece of this discussion tonight. The impact of the general funds, really the second piece. But I'll stop there and allow Mr. Deputy Mayor any any sorts of questions. Again, I went quickly through this, but we are very happy to spend time with you one-on-one to walk through this and talk about the assumptions in in more depth.
Okay, thank you, Mr. White, for that presentation. Any, let me, sorry. Yeah, it looks like Mr. Duncan has a question. Go ahead, Mr., sorry, Councilman Duncan.
I have several things, and whether you just want to accept these as comments, that's fine also. And if anyone wants to address them, I'm good with that. I want to be very clear that I think the work you've done is great, given the numbers you've been given. I just have some questions about how we're interpreting or looking at some of this data. And and I preface this with saying you can ask the FOTS people. I've been as annoying to them on this topic and subject as anybody. And I have dug as deep as I can and I I've, because I want to get this as right as humanly possible as we go through this. In regards to capital maintenance, I guess my issue there is that's a self-inflicted wound essentially. And I'm going to use the pejorative "we" in the sense that we made a determination as a governing body in a city that we thought this governance change was going to be made perhaps sooner than it was. We removed that $600,000 from our our budget. And now we are saying, doing an oops, maybe we we acted too early. So while that's a very real issue we have to deal with, it's a little skewed in the sense that we we sort of did it to ourselves. And so that's just, that that's my concern there as we look at that number. I understand what it means for the impact of this. But we did have that money in there up until last spring and we removed it. I think we jumped the gun there in retrospect, but, you know. My second thing is I'm really confused about why, at the end of the day, the internal shared services doesn't see some more savings. Because my understanding, unless I'm wrong, is that once the, once this agreement is made, we are not doing anything for the zoo anymore. In other words, we're not using our IT person to assist them at times. We're not using our HR department to ever assist them at times. They are taking those on 100% or, I guess, planning to reimburse us for those costs. So I don't know why at the end of the day, there isn't, I won't say it should be zero, but some more savings there. If the idea is we're giving them a pot of money and that's it, they got to make a go of it based on that pot of money and not use city resources anymore. So I'm a little confused by that number. I'd also like to point out that the one thing I'm to is in the new capital projects area, it it makes the, it talks about the expense of the, takes on the expense of the new projects. But it doesn't really also factor in that with every new project we've had at the zoo comes with it a new employee or two. And that is an expense the zoo, under this agreement, would take on also. So I think there is a savings there, if you will, in the sense that that has to be part of that projection that we we would save if there's new projects. And you touched on the attendance issue. I think it's a little, I would, I would love to see 2021 bounce back as fast as it would. I have a feeling we're looking at summer or later before we see some of those numbers. So so again, I I think you did good job. I think it's some of the, just, it's kind of what we've given you to work with. And those are just my initial thoughts. I did have one last question, I guess, for staff. I'm still confused. What happens to the TGT funds that would currently currently go? It's it's based on the year percentage. It's traditionally around $100,000. Are we planning to pass those on as additional funds? Or are we, what's, because I would see a savings there too if we're we're setting a set mill and then we're recap, we're re, you know, getting back some of our TGT funds that currently go to the zoo. So those are my pot of issues. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, do you want us to address them?
Absolutely, yes, yeah, sure.
Okay, so in terms of the capital maintenance, I think that's an accurate summary. I think as a staff and governing body, I think there was a lot of discussion that we would be transitioning earlier. And then, you know, the the public health emergency hit and I think resources were quite frankly diverted elsewhere. And there was a just, I think that that's the summary. I don't know, in terms of how to respond, I don't, I don't think we're, the model is is the goal of the model was not to place blame anywhere. You know, the the capital maintenance issues have built over up over, you know, decades. You know, it's definitely an issue that we need to address regardless of whether it, you know, stays with the city's operating model or whether it goes to a public-private partnership. In terms of the internal service fees, the 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 portion of that gap is about 400,000. So the majority of it is facilities, followed by IT and then fleet. And then there's just a, there's a small portion related to more basic overhead costs. So what Mr. White was was talking about with IT is that in many cases, we don't necessarily have a dedicated personnel that would only be doing zoo. In the past, we have had several facilities, people based out of there, but that wasn't the only function that they served. So our staffing level, I I I think in the future, we can also have facilities here to discuss it or public works to discuss it. You know, the the intricate details of their department. But my understanding is that, you know, we have a fairly small staff in those departments and that we don't typically dedicate a person 100%, 100%, you know, 100% of the days to that particular function. So the the idea that we we would be looking at either reducing costs citywide to accommodate it. You could, that could include both personnel or non-personnel. Of the 400,000, though, facilities believes between eight, 80,000 to 100,000 would likely go away based on just different types of supplies that they've purchased for the zoo on an annual basis. That fluctuates year over year depending on the types of projects that occur. But we think that there's probably 80 to 100,000 dollars of savings that we could achieve in the first year of that 400. But the remaining 300,000, there would need to be discussions or feedback from the governing body, you know, in terms of how you want to handle that gap. The capital project area, the personnel question. Yeah, you're you're, you've identified one of the the limitations of the model. So when we were, when we were building this, you know, there's a a goal is to have an apples-to-apples comparison, right? There there's so many variables that you could try to build in, but it wouldn't necessarily be providing you the governing body that comparison that was requested. So some of the other items, you know, that are kind of the assumptions we've had to make is is quite frankly with the exhibit. So we've, in these models compared that FOTS fundraises and is able to open up these, I think, five additional or four additional events. And we've said, well, if the city maintains the zoo, we would obviously, we would likely have to issue debt to have the same type of program expansion. We don't have the cash on hand to accommodate that. And so one of the limitations of the model as it's currently presented is that while FOTS is able to fund the additional personnel with the the management fee and other revenue raising options that they have that we don't, the the assumption on the public option was that we weren't going to increase staffing. Now, is that realistic if we were to open up four new exhibits? I would certainly think that the the zoo and Brendan would have a different opinion. So that's something we would have to address if it stays with the city over time. And I think part of the goal with the way it's been presented is that we're really trying to understand the 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 governing body's support of this or or support of a different type of growth expectation. Maybe it's not for new exhibits. Maybe it's a a different number or just a different makeup of the overall zoo. So you've identified one of the the limitations of the model and trying to do an apples-to-apples comparison. Another one is that the the operating cost section, we've funded capital largely out of our 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 capital budget, not out of operating. So going back and forth between not including capital on some and and including it in other places, that is a limitation, but I think we we've done the best job in that we can in terms of showing it with and without. And then another item that's not included, that is a limitation that I would expect questions on, is that we didn't try to calculate, I think a market study would need to be completed, but we didn't try to calculate what the potential economic benefit for the city as a whole would be if you were to grow attendance in the way that FOTS has suggested that they would be able to under a model. And one would likely expect that you would see some economic benefit to the overall community that wouldn't be captured in the financial model or other types of revenue that we're showing. So and then with the TGT question, so the way that we currently handle it, it's collected through TGT and that is transferred into the general fund and that is used to fund the zoo. The zoo's in the general fund. Going forward, the the current agree agreement contemplates that whatever TGT funds are brought in from the TGT tax, that it would just be netted against the the management agreement. So in a year like 2020, when your TGT revenue is down, that risk does stay with the city. However, we, it would be still based on that percentage. The 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 language surrounding that type of tax, we can discuss further. Is it has different, you can't use it for all general fund purposes. So there are some limitations if we were to try to to change the use of it. I think that's all of your questions.
It is. My my last comment then would be just in regards to that. And this will be the last thing I say is, I would just argue, contend that maybe we don't want to put that in this contract specifically dedicating those in a 15-year contract versus us then recognizing internally that our policy is to do that. Because I think once it's locked in, we lose all flexibility moving forward to do anything with those TGT funds, one way or the other. So that would just be my my one comment on that. We can talk about that. Thank you. Appreciate all the answers.
Okay, is that Councilman Lesser? Go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm going to go back to my office tomorrow and see if Spencer hacked into my computer because I I had about some damn near the same question. So I won't, I won't rehash kind of what he 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 went over because those were a lot of my concerns. I was prepared, Mr. White, to to light you up on this because the math wasn't working for me, but you did a, these are tough, you know. And I thought you you did a good job, you know, the numbers as I looked at it and and wasn't prepared for it. And then I thought you did a nice job, though, of of explaining, you know, the capital maintenance and those things and and bringing that up. So thank, thanks for doing that. Those were just a couple of things that, you know, I wanted to point out is, you know, over, you know, I did some, pulled some numbers back and, you know, over the last three years, we've averaged about 800,000 in in, you know, in capital maintenance a year. And, you know, the one thing that I will say is, I I do think that the shared services amounts, I still think that that can be reduced. I think my experience with lots of the nonprofits that I utilize or that I do business with and and do insurance for is a lot of those type of services, IT, things like that, end up becoming in-kind donations to those type of entities in the form of sponsorships, in the form of, you know, those type of things. So I think, I think under the PPP model, I think we'll see it a lot of that. I could, I could tell you four or five different nonprofits that we do that the IT is completely a in-kind donation, you know, for those 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 entities and stuff. And so at the, at the end of the day, you know, I guess my point is, you know, it's going to cost, it's going to cost the city more, more, you know, than we budgeted to operate the zoo or regardless, or it's going to cost, you know, FOTS. I, it appears to me, when I break down the the, your study, you know, or your model, forgive me, it just seems to me that, you know, the negative impact is going to be less under the PPP model and then moving forward, especially if the fundraising continues to go as it is and we continue to add exhibits as we do. And then in, you know, the the staffing of that and such. But I thought it's a pretty well-thought-out, you know, model and all those, you know, this, those different things. It's, it's at the end of the day, it's, it's how we tweak it to to be what we think is relative of what the exposure is going to be. So thank you. Thank you. I thought it was well done.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'm seeing none. Mr. White and Ms. Lamonola, it looks like you guys are off the hot seat for tonight.
I just want to say thank you to Jeff and Jessica. They've put a lot of work into this. And I think, you know, when we first looked at it, we wondered, well, can we, can we help us get closer to a more direct comparison? And when you look at it and being able to manipulate it, it it does finally starts becoming clear. And I struggled with it and had conversations with them a couple of days ago about what this or that. And as we, as they went through it with me a couple of days ago, it started hitting the picture a little better that what we're really dealing with and it has potential. And so I'm I'm excited to be able to continue this discussion.
Okay, thank you, City Manager. Seeing no further. Uh, seeing, uh, no further, um, questions or any, or comments on that item. Uh, I believe next, do we do public comment or announcements next?
Public comment, but wait on.
Okay, okay. There, there is, okay. No one signed up for public comment tonight. Uh, so announcements, so, um, if the court does it first, right?
Um, December eighth preliminary agenda includes one presentation from, uh, City of Pecah for mutual update. In the second agenda, we have a resolution establishing city boundaries. Action items include a public hearing and ordinance for Sunflower rental, um, zoning act Southwest Harrison Street. I'm sorry, two thousand Southwest Big Boulevard. The, uh, we have a public hearing and ordinance for the twenty twenty budget amendments. We have an ordinance for the twenty twenty one downtown business improvement district. And in ordinance establishing the CID for downtown Ramada, resolution for the twenty twenty one legislative priorities. Um, approval of the housing study implementation plan for twenty twenty one. Approval of the consolidate five-year plan and one-year budget for conaction plan. A resolution for the twenty twenty one sort target area update. And then, um, we have the non-discrimination ordinance items. And then we have selection and approval of funding mechanism for zoo governance. On action items include the discussion for citywide curfew and discussion for departmental reorganization and code language revisions for neighborhood relations department. That's it.
Okay. Sounds like a lot of agenda. Um, and, and I'm sorry, I, I messed up here. There were two gentlemen signed up for public comment under the zoo governance thing and I, I see they're both on here. So, um, Fred Patton, Mr. Patton, would you like to, uh, make some comments on that item?
You know, Deputy Mayor, I'm here to answer questions if you had any. And since I don't think we do at this point, I just want to make sure you all see zoo lights behind me and make sure everyone comes out and sees zoo's, zoo lights in the next month. So thank you all. Thanks. Thanks to the staff and council for your work on, on our governance issue. I appreciate it. We, we're making progress.
Thank you, Mr. Patton and, uh, Mr. Colley.
Yep. And I was in the same position as Fred, just here for questions if need be, um, of Fox. So I have no public comment at this time.
All right. Well, well, thank, thank you both. And I'm, I'm sorry I, I messed that up. Um, well now it is time for announcements and, um, Mr. Patton kind of, uh, kind of took, stole my thunder there a little bit on, uh, I don't know if it was, guess it was Sunday night, um, took about seven people in my family. We went out to the zoo lights and if you haven't been, it is fantastic. And every time I go to the zoo and see what, what FOTS has done, uh, it just frankly gives me more, um, more comfort with, with handling over the operations of the zoo to them. Uh, just everything they do is done with excellence out there. Um, it was, it's just fantastic. If you haven't been, go. It's seven dollars, that's eight dollars. I think you're supposed to get a dollar off. But the, but the thing wasn't working online, so I overpaid by a dollar per ticket. So I'm going to you find a claim with the city on that. But, uh, it, it's fantastic. I encourage everyone to go out there. It's well worth your time and your money. So go out and support our zoo and, uh, that's it tonight. Um, now let's see who we have next is Mr. Padilla, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'll be green. Uh, I just want to remind everybody that this is a Giving Tuesday and I want everybody as they uh, head towards the holidays to keep in mind those people who maybe aren't as fortunate as, as some of us are. And give some time to the Red Kell campaign and other organizations that are trying to make the holidays a little bit easier for others. Thank you very much, Mayor.
All right, Councilwoman Nager.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, short and sweet tonight. Be kind, be smart, be safe and stay healthy.
Thank you, uh, oh, there you are, uh, Councilman Duncan.
Thank you, everybody. Oh.
And then Councilman Dobler.
Yes, I'm, I'm Councilman Duncan Dobler tonight.
No one's in order on my screen. I got all these people. I got a thousand old boxes everywhere. So.
That's fine. I just want to take a brief minute to, uh, yeah, to thank, uh, staff. I, I asked the question about the zoo. Can can you, uh, show me a comparison? Uh, they put a lot of work into it. I spent some time with. And, uh, it, it makes a lot of sense to me. Uh, and I think anybody else that, uh, has an opportunity to just sit down with Jessica and Jeff will, uh, find the same thing. So appreciate that and have a great week. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Lesser.
Thank you, uh, Deputy Mayor. Hey, I just wanted to, uh, say thank you to, uh, to, uh, all the people that reached out to me, um, while I was sick with COVID. Um, uh, I heard from Christina, Sylvia, Hannah, I heard from everybody here, you know, and, and I, I appreciate that. I appreciate Tony kind of picking up the slack for me, um, on, uh, on some of my responsibilities. Um, and, uh, you know, Tony can, Tony can, uh, you know, speak to this man. This is, this is nasty stuff. Anybody who tells you and puts out there that, oh, this is, it's the flu, more people die. This, the flu doesn't linger on and on and on and, and, uh, you know, I want to just, uh, there again, thank you, everybody who prayed for me. It was, uh, it's still, still, uh, I'm still not a hundred. I'm still only about seventy-five percent, but I want to take a second real quick because I said I would. Um, Artif Griffin, who I've worked on, uh, several projects in, in District Nine with, um, uh, you know, one of the things that we're seeing with our hospitals being so fill, full is um, the release in people, I think quicker than they, 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 they want to because um, they're showing signs that they're being well and, and Artif has, uh, become a good friend. Her, her son's on the semen school board, Keith, and a friend of mine and she's been in and out and she's in, she's in, uh, in the hospital now. And so, uh, I, I wanted to tell her, wish her to get well. Um, ready to go have, uh, some District Nine coffee with her and, and, and tackle what other issues she has going on. And then um, the other thing is, um, I wanted to ask for prayers for one of our, our, our leaders in, in our community, uh, former Sheriff Dick Barta. Um, is, uh, I just talked to his daughter, who's a good friend of mine, and he's not well at all. He's, he's, um, he's in the hospital with COVID and he's in ICU. And, uh, he's had some other, you know, challenges health-wise that has made his body not, not quite as, as, as strong as it is. And so, um, absolutely wonderful man, uh, great, uh, civic, uh, leader in, in, in law enforcement and, and I asked for, uh, you know, prayers for, for, for Sheriff Barta, um, that hopefully he can kick this. So, um, I've rambled. Thanks again, um, for, uh, the, the thoughts, the notes, all the calls I got. I, I truly appreciate that and, and, uh, um, I just wish Padilla would have reached out, but that's, you know, that's the way it goes. So, thank you.
Oh, that was fantastic. Uh, Councilwoman Hiller.
You're so cute, Mike. Um, just some holiday, um, suggestions, uh, when you key off, uh, Councilman Emerson, actually, I'm in this COVID time especially, getting the family together and driving or walking at night to see lights is a perfect family or friends get together. The zoo lights are so exciting and, um, the, the zoo is always great at night as far as I'm concerned, but again, with this PPP pending, uh, supporting them to raise funds and get off to a great start, sounds good. Also, the tree and the lights will be up at Energy Plaza this weekend. It is first Friday weekend and so getting around to see what's happening in all of our various commercial areas is worthwhile and shopping local. Hotwood neighborhood, even with the, the city's utilities and street people have the width of water me breaks back together. Is open, brainful business for their lunch show and drive-through as are many neighborhoods in town. So just want to encourage that's affordable, fun and a great way to see Topeka. That's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Daudy Vialcola.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just, uh, pretty short, um, blessings to everyone that has family sick, uh, with COVID in the hospital with COVID or has transitioned over because they have not survived COVID. And we lost one of our, uh, community members, uh, just last night, part of our Lady Guadalupe, uh, parish. And it happened so quickly. Um, and so prayers to her family. I think that when it comes to the reality of how much of an increase we're seeing and how many more people it's impacting, there's nothing but like concern, right? Deep, deep concern. When I heard that, you know, Mike had it, I was like, gee whiz, you know, I mean, how many more people of, you know, of us are going to get it on council and are we all going to be okay? And, you know, are we going to be able to stay healthy? And then you think about all the other folks out there, folks that don't have insurance and you know, single-family homes and children, and it just brings it so close to home. We just need to keep praying. We need to keep reaching out. Probably the next month or two or three is going to be really, really hard. And so, um, we just have to stay as united as we can, not always agreeing, but as united as we can. And Topeka, you're in our prayers. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. And, um, Councilwoman Ortiz, uh, texted me, her computer lost the connection and so she just said, good night to everyone. And lastly, uh, Mr. Trout.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. A few things that I have, as, you know, we talked about the zoo issue tonight. Um, the last comment I would have on that is as you have the one-on-ones, uh, you know, the one question that comes out of it is if we're going to continue to move this forward, we're looking at a budget shortfall um, for twenty-one and we're, uh, staff's looking at a couple of different options. And so we'll be seeking your input as to which of the options you prefer in that area. So as we continue this discussion into next week or two, um, that's something that we're going to be looking for you. So be thinking about that and really boils down to making adjustments in the existing budget or looking at, um, additional funding from, uh, another source. The issue related to, if you looked ahead to the agenda next week, there is on, there are a discussion item related to the curfew. It was something that I identified when I came, uh, uh, middle of the summer related to that we did not have in our ordinance, any opportunity to be able to institute a curfew on our own if we felt there was a need to. Now I have used it in the past related to natural disasters and is important in order to have it in place in order to protect property so that we can establish an off-limits area for people. Um, so I wanted to make sure you understand that is the, the direction that I'm coming from is that it all relates to uh, the protection of property and the incidence of natural disaster primarily. It can be used in the area of civil unrest if that's occurring. But, you know, my biggest concern is that we need to have it in place. So when tornado comes through our community, we need to be able to establish a curfew to protect the area that's been affected by that tornado. Um, so I'll be looking at that, uh, as a discussion item on the eighth, but knowing how we have a pre-full agenda and that may need some public input for you. Um, uh, from the community, we'll be looking at, actually looking at a decision if, uh, in January. Um, we'll push that item off as a decision item until January. We'll, we'll talk about it since it's already been placed on the agenda. But, um, getting your input and then we'll look at January to address it. Um, be looking later in the week, a couple of updates related to COVID items. Um, the staff has been working hard on a number of areas to utilize our CARES Act money that we received through the state and the county, uh, as it was funneled through the county. Um, we've got a lot of things that we're doing in our buildings, uh, purchasing of equipment, uh, electronic equipment in order to allow people to work from home. And so we have a good accounting of that. We're getting an update as it relates to the end of November. And we'll look to present that to you at the end of the month, end of the week here, so that you can see what we're looking at doing and how much funding we will be holding back because we are looking at holding back a portion of it rather, uh, than using it all at once. Um, so I'll provide that. Also, we've had a number of programs where we just rolled out the COVID basic needs. We already had rolled out a small business assistance program. Um, we have, if all the projects or I should say that all the applications proceed, we'll be looking at almost five hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars that will be put out to assist small businesses in our community. And through that program that we set aside the money earlier in the year. Um, a lot of applications aren't completely through the process. Four have been. I've signed four. So um, I'll be updating you with a list of the businesses that we've already approved and those that, and a number related to those that are coming forward. And also we continue to assist people with utility needs that they have, uh, prior to even the basic needs program being created. So there's a lot of good things that we're doing in order to help people out there in the community, both small business and individuals. And so, uh, need to get you an update and that's, that will be coming by the end of the week. The last thing I have is Councilman Lesser, it's good to see you back on the screen and involved. Um, I'll get in touch. Uh, we're due to have a, a breakfast in the future and we'll, we'll figure out when that is. So good to see you back. That's all.
Thank you, City Manager. And I do not believe there is any executive sessions tonight. Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct.
All right. Well, seeing no other business before the council, this meeting is hereby adjourned. Good night, everyone. Thank you.